All right. Sorry for the delay. We had to get some of this audio things hooked up here. Call this meeting to order at seven oh five. Pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which exists one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. Microphones working? Check. Roll call PC members.
Uh, DeYoung.
Here.
Dratton. Here. Pelton and yes, Robel.
There.
Merchant.
Here.
Melnick.
Here.
And Bosler is excused, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dave.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Excuse, okay.
All right, um, does anybody want to declare any, uh, conflict of interest pertinent to the agenda items today that hasn't already been talked about? None heard? What's that? Yes, it was set in the agenda. Correct, thank you. Uh, we have three changes that I want to make. Um, the first one is, uh, on the minutes, minutes of eight fourteen of twenty twenty-five have already been approved. We can cross that off. Uh, we would like to move uh, the site plan review with AIS. Uh, SPR case twenty twenty-five dash oh four up to after correspondence. And we are going to add, Denise is going to talk about the budget, um, under her six, uh, D. Secretary. That's all I had. Anybody else have anything else?
No.
Motion approved? Nope. Uh, I make a motion to approve these, uh, adjustments to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, through. All right, public comment. Um, I would just like to make a, a point, um, about something that was made in last public comments about, um, us looking at larger communities for, um, ideas with, uh, the S., uh, the short-term rentals. We're looking at all communities, not just large, large, small. Um, anywhere we can get any information, we're going to look at because we want to have all the information together. When we make that decision of what we, you know, want to try to bring forward. But I just want that to be clear, there's no looking at just larger communities for that. Um, did you want to mention anything? Okay. Um, okay, so in-house, any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the PC. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following rules and procedures. Yes. Comments shall be directed to, to the PC with questions directed to the chair. Any person wishing to address the PC shall speak from the lectern, please. Persons may address the PC on matters that are relevant to township planning and zoning issues. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding for time that's needed to answer a PC member's question. Public comment should be limited to three minutes per person. To avoid unscheduled debates, PC will generally not comment or respond to public comments other than to ask a question. Silence or non-response from the PC should not be interpreted as disinterest. Is there anybody in, in-house that would like to make a comment? You come on up to the lectern, please. State your name, address.
Hello, my name is Jerry Tomczak. I live at four oh eight Cedar Street in El Crapids. I'm here to discuss the AIS site plan review tonight.
Okay.
Is this the time to speak? Or should I wait?
Um, we will have another time to talk about that.
Good. Later. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Public comment? None heard, we'll move on. There's no public hearing today. Okay, the approval of minutes of previous regular meetings. Uh, meetings and special, uh, meetings, eight twenty-six twenty-five, we'll talk about first.
I, I have some corrections.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm not sure if I have the right one. I have to look on page, so I'm, I'm just going to read out because I have the pages, I have the pages separated, sorry. Um, at the bottom of page, uh,
Page number at the top.
At the, oh, you're gonna use the top one, uh, page eight. It's the, at the bottom of the page, wineries and tasting rooms ordinance, uh, next steps, I, uh,
Page eight is, uh, that's already been approved.
That's, is, is that one that's been a?
That's, uh, August fourteenth, yes.
Okay, then go to page twelve. All right. Then I better skip that one. Do it. And then, um, is, is the August twenty-sixth one has not been?
No, that's great. That's what we're talking about today.
All right, so under absent, I would like to add the word excused for, for merchant and bosler.
Pages that are?
Twelve.
Oh, that's okay.
Twelve of one fifty-one.
Fifty-one?
Twelve, page twelve of one, of the hundred and fifty-one pages.
Yeah, both of those could list as, um, as that.
Yeah.
Anything else? Does anybody else have anything else on this? Anything else Denise?
Not from, not, uh, that I have, I have knowledge of.
Okay, other than what has been listed already, is there any other additions or comments on this? No? I'll make a motion that we upset, uh, make the changes as listed by Denise. Adding Sadie and David's, uh, excused absence. And, uh, prove this as written.
Second, Stritten.
Are these all roll, roll call or are these all just in favor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period. Moving on, fifty-nine, three. Does anybody have any corrections, comments?
What was the date that you said?
Uh, September three.
We have that.
None heard? Your motion to accept this?
So moved, Melnick.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Period. All right. The correspondence. The letter, letter from David. Um, his family endeavors are taking him on to, I believe he can't sit and do justice on the board anymore, so he's, uh, looks like he's resigning. On that. Um, there's also a letter from Chief Josh Morgan. Get a chance to read it. Anybody have any questions on them?
We're talking about the memo dated nine twenty-three, right on?
Yes.
Bell, so Richard.
Yep.
Page.
What's that?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Yep. Okay, no other comments on that, we'll move on. Okay, we'll spring up, uh, Deb, and we'll talk about, uh, SPR case twenty twenty-five oh four, ESI.
Good evening. Um, tonight we are going to, uh, take a look at the site plan review for, uh, for AIS, um, adding the, uh, we've been talking about it for about four months, five months now. Actually, it's October, so I guess six months, yeah. So, um, they are wanting to add their sixty by a hundred and twenty building. I did put posters on the far wall. I pasted them on the windows over there, so if, uh, if you need a, uh, a reminder of where this building is going. It's, uh, in the recently rezoned industrial area of that, um, parcel. It's south of their existing large building. Um, it's a cold storage building and it's going to be, um, uh, basically walls, lighting, cement floors, and a place for them to store and rack a lot of the material and the, um, uh, equipment that's currently being stored outside so they can get it out of the weather. Um, Gordy Frazier has reviewed, I emailed all the information to you on Gordy Frazier's, um, assessment of the stormwater. Keep in mind, we do not have a stormwater ordinance in Whitewater Township. It was repealed. Um, but Gordy Frazier did review it to look at the, uh, where the retention ponds are. And, uh, I did have a question posed by one of the members today that if we needed to have a fence around a retention pond and we have no verbiage in our ordinance that states anything about a retention pond needing to be fenced. If it were a pond that we're being, you know, always going to have water in it, it would probably need to be fenced, but it's a retention pond. When you get a heavy rain, the water goes there and then dissipates into the sand. Um, the site is primarily sand. Um, the reason this is before you as a site plan is because the zoning administrator only has approval to do, um, accessory buildings not to exceed four hundred square feet. So it might be something to consider in a future review of that ordinance. Um, does anyone have any questions for me? I know that Jerry Tomczak is the only one I've received communications on regarding the, um, situation or wanted to comment tonight. He did send a letter. I forwarded that on to all of you as well. And, uh, Craig Johnson is here as well to present for AIS Bearinwald Realty. Any questions for me?
I've got some. So
Yep.
You said south of the existing building, but it looks like it's east, is that?
No, it's south.
Point that out.
There's the new building's going right here. So there, there are buildings here, M seventy-two is here, and the building's going right here. It's actually staked.
The, the rectangle then that's to the east of it, is that the septic system or?
Yes, yeah. They do have a septic over here. They do have some storage over there as well. Um, they did their swales and all of their drainage going to the retention pond that's over here, over here. So.
So the proposed improvements also include the berming that was discussed.
This gives you, uh, another site plan review. I emailed this to you yesterday as well. Um, this shows where the proposed building's going, existing building, existing building. You're looking at Jerry Tomczak's drawing and not the one that's provided by the client, by the resident.
So you'd have to go to the documents in the package from Gordy Frazier. Because there were a couple of changes that Gordy Frazier recommended on things he wanted to see on how the, uh, slope of the property was from that new structure to the retention ponds.
For those ones you sent us today?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, okay.
You got it yesterday.
Yeah.
There were four documents. There was a two-page letter from Gordy Frazier. Do you want me to go through that? On stormwater? You know, th- their recommendation that is that there should be a maintenance plan and a budget specific to stormwater facilities be recorded with accounting and copies provided to the township. Their general comments, existing onsite sanitary drain field shall be protected during construction to discourage damage compaction by equipment. Runoff from the proposed berms and shall be directed away from the adjacent neighboring properties, and it's recommended that a riprap stabilization overflow be added to the property's basin to control excess flows. Uh, their recommendation overall is based on the review that they received from us, the township, uh, was to approve the site for the site, the stormwater plan recommended, recommended in their letter. And I recommend that we approve this as well from a zoning perspective. There's about a thirty-five acre parcel there and it's all zoned industrial. And I think we've looked at the property a few times at this point.
Yep. Few other questions. Did Gordy Frazier look at anything besides the stormwaters?
No, that's what, that's what I requested they look at.
And so the drawing that shows a second retention basin? I'm confused because the Gordy Frazier doesn't talk about a second.
Craig can probably answer that because he had that conversation with.
Right, so he, he had me up there about five times to take the picture through the laser, so I'll explain it to you. Perfect. This is a big retention pond, huge, so everything, this is a asphalt, everything flows here. This building's going here. Currently, it flows into like weight here. There's, uh, about a hundred forty by thirty, it's about two feet deep. It's a retention pond, so.
It's existing?
Pardon me?
It's existing?
Yeah, yeah, it's existing. So, so, because, because the water runs that way, it's all sand. So typically after it rains, if it's really hard, usually by the time it's done raining, there's nothing in it because it's all sand. And on this side where the property line is, it's, it's below here because we don't want, this is our raised, um, septic, so we don't want any water to get in there. So we're below it over here, we're actually six foot below the neighbor's property line here to make sure none of the stormwater goes on the neighbor's property. That's already existing. And so what he wanted is, uh, he wanted me to move, we're already fifty feet, um, beyond the, um, raised septic field, um, which is what's required. And he said it wouldn't hurt to move it a little farther, so we're going to move it sixty feet, which for us is no big deal. We get a dozer out there. We move it back, and he said, um, he wanted me to make it three feet deep instead of two feet, which again, we can do it in about an hour.
Right.
It's not a problem. So I told him, we'll do that, and that's what you have. So we agreed to do that and just move it ten feet and make it a little deeper by a foot. And it, and it works right now.
How far off the, um, east property line is it?
Um, the building?
No, the, the retention.
Well, it's, it's, uh, basically up to the property line and back a hundred and forty feet to the west. It's just a long ditch.
Does it fill with gravel?
No.
No, just sand.
The sand.
And then, and then this side of the building basically will overhang that asphalt parking lot, and that all runs into this retention pond, which has been there for years.
There's no gutters.
Um, I don't know if we'll put gutters on or not. Either way, it'll run to the same place. Whether I put them on or not. They're not in the plans right now, but we might, we might put them on just because it's cleaner, easier when we're bracketing stuff on the outside of it. Any other questions?
Questions?
On that?
Not on that.
Okay.
You have more questions for me, Randy?
Um, I do, but I want to hear from Mr. Tomczak as well, who raises some questions.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Tomczak?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Jerry Tomczak, four oh eight Cedar Street, El Crapids, Michigan. I own the property, my wife and I do, southeast of AIS. It's seventeen acres, has five hundred feet of frontage on Williamsburg Road. There's an outlet on Crisp. And then obviously we have all this property zoned R two.
So are you proud of this here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I've reviewed the site plan. I don't have the reference four-page document that this Grabber mentioned from Gordy Frazier that was provided today. I have what was included on the website. Thank you. So the questions I have that I'm hoping members can answer tonight. I don't see a landscape plan. I don't see a landscape berm. I see a berm. It doesn't provide for any vegetation on the berm. There's a separation of two hundred and thirty-seven feet of the berm that's adjacent to my property. I recall in many conversations and public hearings, this big beautiful berm they were going to provide. Proposed plan is a six-foot-high berm. No landscaping is provided. Why isn't there a continuous berm along that entire east side of their property? The stormwater she references. Why isn't that provided in a plan with proposed drain and swales? If it's in the drawings, I'd like to see those. I want to make sure that everybody understands you can change the size of a detention pond very easily. It's difficult to do after the fact. It's to change the swales, the direction in which that water is moving, if it's paved areas. That includes asphalt parking lots and drives. I don't see an improvement of that, so I assume there's nothing being added for hard surfaces other than the building. Lighting is required. It's a building code. Lighting is required at exit doors on the exterior of the building, and I can provide lighting. That's fine. I don't know how they're going to get approval from the electrical inspector through Grand Travis County. Outdoor storage, is there going to be any outdoor, outdoor storage provided? I want to go back to this conditional rezoning request by applicant. Was there language that specifically stated what they were allowed to do with that property? If it was just saying N one, then why was it a conditional? It was just a rezoning. I thought there were stipulations with this condition rezoning. Where's the proposed water well? I see a septic field. I couldn't tell on my drawing. What's the distance? What's the size of the septic field? What's the dimensions from the setbacks, the property line to the building? Nothing's provided on the plan. The elevations are a set of shop drawings for a pre-engineered building. So is it just a metal-sided building with a metal roof? As I expressed at the Planning Commission of the Township Board, the master plan didn't show this to be N one. I've expressed my concerns for doing this. It's in the letters to you and to the Township Board. I also stated in that letter, if they're going to rezone this property, and they did, I was bringing forth a request to buffer that west side of my property to N one or a commercial. I'll be requesting a buffer of N one to allow for some storage buildings, so I have a buffer between my property and AIS. I realize their property doesn't go all the way to Crisp Road as N one. But you've already granted this approval, and I can see them continuing on down the road. And I want to protect my interest. My plan is to develop my land. I'm going to do it as duplexes that are permitted uses by right. I will bring forth the request. I will make sure to comply with every requirement of this ordinance. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify one thing with you. You were talking, when you're talking about the berm, you're talking along here?
That's right. That's correct, sir.
And if I'm correct, there's an existing septic system here already?
Somewhere over there.
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't tell where it's at.
Is that what, Randy, do you?
Yeah, that's what's shown on the drawings.
So that's already existed, that's not?
Okay, that's fine. And so they're not proposing a new septic field for this particular development?
Not as far as we're aware.
Okay. So that was size, I assume, for their larger building that sits in front of that.
Well, that's, you know, that'd be the county.
Know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They're adding a new building, they're putting additional plumbing fixtures inside that building. There's demand loads for the septic system.
There's no plumbing fixtures in the proposed building.
Old storage though.
See, I don't know this. There's no floor plan that shows us what the proposed use is. What's the occupant load of that building? You're going to allow them to park on that parking lot? It's had enough parking for everybody else? They're talking about adding a training center. The training center was the addition, the first request for this rezoning. They wanted to build a training center. Now, this is a cold storage with the intent down the road to do a training building. Outdoor storage. Nothing's shown on the plan. Are they going to do it? Or are they going to add it? They're already encroaching or did encroach into the R two and agriculture with their outdoor storage. Nothing was done about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for?
I have a few just clarifications.
Let, let me go through my, uh, my zoning report.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the applicant is coming forward to request a site plan review to add a cold storage building sixty by a hundred and twenty along the landscape, along with landscape berms. Um, they, in the future, may want to add a training center, but that is not part of this request. Um, in summary, AIS Construction Company currently operates their facility on the south side of M seventy-two, east of Williamsburg Road. They are provider of new and pre-owned construction equipment, rentals, parts, service, et cetera, and they've been in business for over sixty years and have been in the Williamsburg area since nineteen eighty-nine, and they're growing. Um, they do have a, they are working with students, they are working within the parameters that they have, and I'm not sure they're going to want to come in for a training center at this point. Um, I included in the zoning report exactly what is allowed in zoning ordinance article four point oh nine under Industrial District N one. Is storage warehouses allowed? Yes. Outdoor storage of earth-moving and similar large equipment? Yes. Use permitted by right. Um, the request exceeds the, the authority I have as a zoning administrator to say, yeah, you can have this accessory structure on your property, which is why this is before the board. So my recommendation is the Planning Commission is going to consider the site plan review amendment per zoning ordinance article twelve. The applicant plans to comply with all zoning ordinances, including lighting, landscaping requirements, including berms, plantings, trees that may allow the property to blend with the surrounding environment. Anyone that comes before the Planning Commission with a site plan or a special use request has to conform and comply with all of our zoning ordinances. It's a given. It's not that, oh, we can let them go on this or that. We act, they actually have to comply with all of those ordinances, be it wherever it is. So if, and that's my responsibility to make sure that that happens, and Mr. Johnson has already had, you know, been very um, cordial and very helpful in trying to take care of some other things that have already come up. The requested structure meets all the primary dimensional requirements per Article four and table four point dash, four dash one. Gordy Frazier re- reviewed the entire site plan and stated the following, that as I read earlier, that the, find the application contains the necessary stormwater controls for the proposed building improvements. There again, the township does not have a stormwater ordinance, so it's really difficult to hold somewhat accountable to something that we don't even have documented. Um, I would recommend approval on this. So are there any other questions?
What about the lighting situation?
Um, once the building goes up, I, Craig can defer as to what kind of lighting. I know that the building that they have now does have some lighting down the sides. It's probably going to be more from a security standpoint to make sure minimal lighting. Come on up, come on up here.
All the neighbors at Crisp Road who are reasonable people, right, that live there? Um, there's only one that would like a berm, and we're going to accommodate her. Um, that's Lisa, Bo-, um, Bowren, I think it is, yeah. And so we're going to accommodate her, and we have, you already have the plan where the berms are. There's natural vegetation, um, trees, autumn olive on some of that property that's bigger than any berm that we would build. In between that, when it's not big, we've got the berms, you've got them in the plans, including next to, uh, Mr. Tomczak's property. You have, you have requirements. We're going to follow your requirements. Now, I told Lisa, in addition to your six-foot berm, and you have it, it's six foot by, I think it's forty foot, you have it drawn out what it has to be. I told her, in addition to that for her, because she would like it, and she's been so, she's been reasonable. I told her we would plant some trees on top of it, and she said, I would like that. I said, we'll do that. But you have regulations, ordinances which will follow. We don't need to debate that tonight. Okay, I've watched Mr. Tomczak come here, meeting after meeting after meeting, uh, recite your old master plan over and over and over again. Okay, so let's not get sidetracked on things that have nothing to do with what I'm requesting.
Just to clarify, none of this that we're talking about is even on next to this.
Use your microphone.
Grab this microphone.
You know, it's yours.
Oh, yeah, here we can go, here we go.
Yours.
Sure. It's nowhere near it.
So nothing that we're talking about in this plan is going to be down here at all, right? This is already, we've already talked about this, and the berms are going to be here somewhere, right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
But this building, what you're talking about today?
Yes, it's up here.
Is up here.
Yes.
The septic system is already in place.
Existing right here.
And the, um, retention pond is?
Already existing in place.
Right there, and that's what you're going to up, update. Right there, and that's what you're going to update a little bit.
I'm just going to make it a little deeper by a foot, and I'm going to move it back ten feet to the south.
Okay.
And it, yeah, it's nowhere near his property.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
These people don't want any berms in their Roamer utility, and we get along with them just fine.
Good, that's good, thank you.
And that was the only other point, that Roamer utility specifically requested no berms between their, their N one properties.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I look at the zoning ordinance, and I see a required site plan, and it lists twenty-six items that have to be in a required site plan. And I don't see everything in the plan submitted unless somebody can point out to me where it is. Particularly of interest is number nineteen, where it says the location and specification for all proposed and internal landscaping and other buffering features. We have a, the drawing here that shows the proposed berm and little dots on there that I assume represent trees, but I don't know what the extent screening is being provided there, and I don't know. I appreciate the desire to, to go and work with the neighbors and try to get the kind of tree cover that is going to benefit them, but I, I don't see the landscaping plan that's required.
And you're, you're talking about the landscaping plan around the building?
No, around the proposed berm. And, and I also, I, I think it was mentioned earlier about this twenty-three-foot opening where it's existing vegetation is marked on the plan. So it doesn't make any sense to knock the trees down to put a berm in, I get that. But I see a proposed berm both along Crisp Road and going north then as that, as the property turns north. But I don't know what's going in there as far as plant material.
And that's part of this building plan?
That, that's part of what's required in a site plan, according to twelve oh three G.
You can make that a condition of the, what requirements? Is there a specific type of tree that you want on the berms? I mean, he is.
I think, I think the idea was that there would be some berming that would happen, that would provide adequate screening so that the equipment would be.
Gosling Zubek, I paid him to do it.
Gosling, Gosling Zubek provided.
Where is it?
There isn't one in our packet.
You probably got it in an earlier package. Hold on, I'll go get it.
Okay.
Yeah, I paid him to do it. He came out, we walked the property, and you have a copy.
I, I just, I just want to know what we're approving, obviously.
And it meets your requirements. What, what would be in addition is planting the trees on top of it for the one on Crisp Road. That would be in addition.
Understand.
Which we've agreed to do.
Okay. So there is, there is a plan that shows that, that just not.
Deb was going to go look for it right now.
I thought I had seen it somewhere as well. Well, there's, there are, there are trees shown here, but it just says owner-placed vegetation roadway side of berm. It doesn't say what they are, and they should really be evergreen, and it should be a mix of shrubs and.
Yeah, that should be something that's going to provide a certain amount of screening, and they can, and we also know, is it, you know, is it, how tall are the trees, what's at the time of planting, is it, you know, there's a whole.
Well, you're, 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 you don't require vegetation on it, you require a berm. Correct?
There's a whole landscaping section in the ordinance that addresses berms and landscaping features that your, your landscape architect should have looked at in order to provide this design. So it's, it's in the ordinance, it's, but, and I do, now that you mentioned it, recall something being provided, but I don't. We don't have it, and it's.
I think Deb was, Deb was looking for it.
That's what he, that's what he drew. And then he just basically took that, what you require for width.
Right, so you want a three-to-one slope, and you want a top, I get it.
So that's what, that's what he drew, what he drew up.
Okay.
But there's.
Are there any other questions? We'll wait for Deb to bring that up. Is there anything else you saw on there?
No, I just, we should have complete site plans, so. That's coming to the planning commission, that should.
I wanted to, to just clarify, the six-foot height of the berm is going to follow the slope of the property, right? So as, as the property's sloping, you're maintaining a six-foot berm.
This is?
Yes.
Well, the berms, the berm, other than where there's natural vegetation, the berm will run along Crisp Road on the on the R two portion, which would be across from the Bowermans. And then it'll go, it'll then run north, and then, you know, there's a bunch of trees there. So it'll stop where the trees are bigger than any berm we would build, and then where there's not trees, we'll continue it again. Basically where Mr. Tom Zach's property is.
Right, but there's a fifty, I, I believe, this is very hard to read, but I believe along that two hundred and ninety-nine-foot stretch of berm that there's at least an eleven-foot change in elevation. And so my question is, when you're starting down here and you're six feet high, you're going to continue to be six feet high as the elevation of the land changes?
We're going to be six feet high from whatever the elevation is where the berm is.
From existing grade.
Yeah, from whatever the grade is. Now, for, for the Bowermans, you know, it would make sense for them to have it closer to Crisp Road because their elevation is another ten feet higher across the road. And if we moved it back to the south, that wouldn't be a very good, you know, she'd see over the top of it.
Well, there's two different things that a berm is doing, right? It's, there's a visual side to it, and then there's the noise issue. And the, the, the berm along Crisp Road won't do anything for the noise, because the, the noise needs.
We pretty much solved the noise issue, because the noise issue, if you recall, it was backup alarms.
Okay.
So what we did is we got some white noise backup alarms on our yard machines, and you can't hear them anymore. So, so it works.
Yeah, we've got that.
And we, and we locked the gate up, we do not let truckers come in before seven or after six. They used to before, they, because they could get in there and they could load equipment, which have backup alarms, because we can't change them all. So we've changed all that, and I did that months ago, and I said I would. So the backup alarm noise that people talked about at the previous meetings, I think we've solved most of that. And, and as I've stated before, I've been there over twenty-five years, and we've never had a noise complaint. But I think we've solved the backup alarm issue on our property.
Okay.
All right, just to figure out this berm issue, so there is a, a berm ordinance that, that you would have to follow, correct?
We have a landscaping chapter in the zoning ordinance that describes berms and landscaping plant material on the berms.
Okay, so that's already in the ordinance, we don't have to deal with that.
It is, but it's supposed to be shown on the site plan as, but it's not, so.
Okay.
I, I do recall something being divided before, I wish it was in our packet with us, but it's not.
Well, I guess it's in this.
It's in my hand.
It doesn't tell me how many trees, what, what type and variety they are, and how much screening is being provided, which is
I see.
common piece of a site plan.
Okay.
I don't think this hangs this up, but I get, I, I want I want a complete site.
We can add that as a condition, correct? So is there any other issues? Anybody wants to discuss? So to clarify this issue, we would just put a, a special condition that, that they bring that the berms diagram that would meet the ordinance.
It's article ten is the ordinance.
To, to Deb for approval, correct?
Article ten landscaping standards talks about the buffers and the specifics.
Yes.
So, yeah.
There's a whole chapter on this.
I, I thought you just said we had a, make a special thing that they had to meet the ordinance. Doesn't make sense.
Well, what makes sense is, what Randy's saying is that they're supposed to divide, provide that to us here. And Randy doesn't feel that it's, it, you know, doesn't, it doesn't explain everything that's in the ordinance.
I will get with Gosling Zubek, the, the guy that came out and drew that, and he will.
So.
And I will get it back to you.
I don't know why.
So if we add that as a special condition, that they provide that to Deb.
Aren't they supposed to anyway?
They are.
Right. Why would it have to be a special condition?
Because it's not out here right now.
Approve it tonight.
We're approving a site plan without the elements of it, it's like approving half a building plan here, I guess, not half, but.
Yeah. Okay. Understand that? Okay.
Well, the only thing that's missing is specific vegetation. That's what's not there. He's, he's got the berms, he's got the dimension of the berms, he's got the height of the berms, he's got the location of the berms. So I need to get these details of, of the vegetation.
Well, for all we know on this, he's our bushes here. I mean, there's nothing that describes.
What do you require? Do you, do you require some?
Well, I think, I think we have this figured out, so let's, I want to hear from Josh real quick.
So I received site plans from Deb for A I S for the fire department. The fire department should be receiving site plans for any structure going up in our community, be it previous owners or new buildings. I did a preliminary site plan review based on the information I had and provided Mr. Johnson with some contingencies of conditional approval once I get stamped architectural, or stamped drawings, which I, I do not have at the current time. Just stating that a fire department lane must be twenty feet wide, all weather, and able to support trucks. Must be provided. Access roads must allow firefighters to reach all sides of the building, that every exterior wall is within a hundred feet of the apparatus position. We have spoken, we cannot drive apparatus on the east side of the building because of the septic field. So we would have to be able to access a hundred and fifty feet around the building, because that's what our hose lengths are, from that parking lot and from Google Earth measurements and walking it in the past. We should be able to do that, but I just, again, need actual stamped drawings. The separation between buildings appears to be about fifty feet, which is more than adequate between buildings. We have discussed the fueling area, just wanted to make that something from the fireside, make sure it's the, the bullards are in place, so the protection remains. My biggest stipulation that the review is based on storage only for the fire department. If at any time the building is ever used for vehicle repairs, fueling or maintenance, it would have to be upgraded to meet fire code. And that would require potential suppression, which their other building does currently have. And just knox box and visible address numbers if there are secure doors on it. So my only next step, my only request from the planning commission is that you make approval conditional of our, the fire department doing a site plan review and providing a letter of conditional approval. So that's all. Anybody have any questions? And I would, I would have provided that letter. This is, we're still, we're, we're working through some kinks in our communication process when it comes to site plan. So we'll get it all cleared up, but next time you'll have that letter in your packet, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
We have some work to do.
I don't. Just looking at the article ten for our landscaping standards under berms, the, the minimum requirements for a berm, minimum standards for berms. It doesn't say anything about requiring what they're planting on the berm. It just says grass or living ground cover maintained in a healthy growing condition. I don't see where we were requiring them to tell us what they're putting on top of the berm, other than that, other than the size and the slope, the rise. So I, I just want to make sure what we're asking him to provide us is actually in our ordinance before we put that out there and send him to go do that, because that seems like something we could figure out right now.
I think, I think section ten point zero eight talks about the development standards and what kind of, what kind of canopy of truth are, are necessary on that.
Looking at Sadie, ten point what?
Oh, she was looking at ten point seven.
Seven B.
And then B, yeah.
There was also conversation when this was first brought up that we were going to provide a substantial amount of buffering landscape, combination of berms and plant material to effectively screen things visually and in terms of noise.
So the, the concern that I have is that the berms are just plucked on here, and there's nothing, no changing, no changes have been made to the topography. And in terms of making sure that they're not going to affect the neighboring property. It looks like the, the, the topographic lines have been redrawn, but they, they haven't. I mean, it looks right now like it's shutting.
If you'll recall, you suggested I go talk to the neighbors
Uh huh.
at one of these meetings, the hearings, which I did. Those, they, they were part of that drawing you're looking at. So those neighbors on Crisp Road.
Well, I, I don't think we're questioning that.
Okay.
What she's questioning is, this is an agricultural drawing depicting the slopes and where the trees are and how many they are and what they are, in which I, I would have to take a look at that to see if that is actually what is required.
It's, I'm looking at it right here, so in, in ten seven B, line three, it says berms shall be constructed in such a manner so as not to alter drainage patterns on site or adjacent properties or obstruct vision for reasons of safety ingress or egress. And I'm not worried about the visual. I'm just worried about the drainage and making sure that we're not, because you are, you know, you're creating a raised area, right? And so it's naturally going to want to.
Well, it naturally slopes back from south to north, which is all our property, all the way to M seventy-two. So it's, it slopes back into our property. That's, that's the natural slope. It's, it's about fifty-foot higher out at Crisp Road than it is where this building is going to go.
And so on the east side of these berms, have you left enough space that the water can run between the end of the berm and your property line towards seventy-two?
On the east side?
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be plenty of room. And again, it's, it's very sandy there, so it, it, drainage won't be an issue.
I can't tell how much space it is, there's no dimension. There's dimension on the berm, but there's no dimension between the end of the berm, the, the east side of the berm and the property line.
I think we can solve all this by just putting a special note in there, a special requirement that they supply this, all this information that's needed to, what's the number?
Oh, ten, ten seven, I believe, am I right?
Oh, ten seven, the plan.
It's right above that, it's, it's, it's B, it's under figures seven, ten seven. I can't figure out what part of the. I'm on landscape standards.
Does that include what you're talking about, Randy?
It's the whole chapter, really, but.
Okay, so to me.
Yeah.
What's, what's?
Starts out in ten oh two and ten oh three about buffering, and there's a combination of trees required.
So it's still ten point oh eight?
Well, yeah. Ten oh two and ten oh three talk about the requirement for buffer zones, and then ten oh three is a development standard, so one canopy tree per lineal foot of a fraction of buffer zone length and a standard like that, which I assume was met when the original drawing was prepared to us.
And so the minimum standard for berms, do you see that? Is that still ten point oh eight?
It's on page.
Yes.
It's on page, and I'm paged.
Ten dash nine.
Yeah, I believe it's still, it's ten point oh eight B. And that's where all the berm standards, the minimum standards for berms are listed, and those need to be shown on the drawings.
I think we can do a condition that we see these.
That the berms are in the, that we have them in the proper places, and we're just landscaping up per, per the code. And what was provided before.
Everybody seem comfortable with that? And then also the approval, subject to the approval of, I'm sorry.
Fire chief.
Of the fire chief.
And the conditions expressed by Gordy Fraser. I think there were two things about maintenance when they're in the letter.
So the approval for just a special for the approval of the fire chief's site plan, is that correct?
Just as a condition of approval.
Just as a condition of approval.
How would that first one read? How would the first one read about um? Well, no, no, the motion would be to, to approve with these stipulations. So what would that, the first stipulation about uh, meeting the.
They provide a landscape plan that is consistent with article ten and what was provided in prior discussions when the rezoning was at first at issue.
And the third one would be
uh, the Gordy Fraser conditions from their letter dated September twenty-sixth.
You're talking about the recommendations at the end on page two? Okay.
And then um, Josh, do we need to put a special um condition in there for if the building is used for vehicles later that?
That would be. So the condition for the fire department will be in my approval that.
In your site plan.
If I were to come do an inspection in a year, hint, hint, um, and it's changed that, that it would have to then be brought up to fire code based on the change of use. And that goes with any building in the township. If I don't want it to be used for something else.
That does not be in there.
It does not, no. My, my request is just that um, I, I don't see, based on the drawings that I've been provided, that there are going to be any issues. So.
And the fact that we have a huge shop with fourteen doors that we already work in that's heated and, you know, it has fire suppression and.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just trying to clean up when we like, so that way we work together better um, that we're involved in the discussion. So that's all.
Okay, so with um, approving this with those three conditions, um, is there any other issues that you can, are concerned about? No?
No.
You concerned about that at all? Those three conditions?
I don't know. No. I'll get with, I'll get with gasoline to do back next week.
All right.
So to be clear, there should be a landscape plan that shows the site with all the tables that show the plant materials.
I have yours. I'll just read them off here. I've got number one, these will be the special conditions, three of them. Uh, landscape plan consistent with article ten and previous plan must be convinced, submitted to Deb for approval. Um, condition second two would be approval of uh, the fire chief's site plan. And three would be uh, conditions of September twenty-sixth letter from Gordy Fraser. All right. Like, anybody want to entertain a motion?
Would you do it?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion that we accept this um, plan. Site plan review case SPR twenty twenty-five dash oh four with the uh, approval is written with the three special conditions as listed earlier. Do you need me to read, read them again?
I would like you to, yes, please. Thank you.
Special conditions would um, special conditions would be uh, number one, uh, provide a landscape plan consistent with article ten of our township ordinances and consistent with the previous plan that has been filed.
Just a moment.
Okay.
Just a minute ago, you mentioned these and said something about subject to Z A. What was submitted to the Z A for approval. I'm going with the verbiage you're giving me right now. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. So I've taken several types of notes as you discussed it. Okay.
Uh, condition two would be um, condition of approval of the fire chief's site plan.
Okay. Could you say that again? Condition of approval?
Um, the special, these are the three special conditions, right? One of them would be the approval of the fire chief's site plan.
Okay.
I'll take out words I don't need in there. And three would be um, to meet the conditions in the September twenty-sixth letter uh, from Gordy Fraser.
Well, just so I understand that one, they have like recommendations. Is that what you're talking about in the, in the letter from Gordy Fraser?
Is that what you're talking about the?
They have recommendations, the maintenance recommendation, they have general comments. I just want to understand what exactly it is that you want.
And general comments. So I'm going to go off maintenance, general comments and the recommendation, the last three items. Okay?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Did you mention that the, that the um, landscape plan needs to be reviewed by the zoning administrator?
Things submitted to Deb. I did put that in there, right?
No, not in the final version. You did not.
Right. So uh, make sure you add that to number one, uh, that that landscape plan consistent with article ten of our township ordinance and, and consistent with the previous plan submitted, he submitted to the township.
That it be submitted to the zoning administrator?
Yes.
I'm going to read all this back to you when you get done. Were you changing any of the Gordy Fraser line? Based on.
I don't think we need to, do we? No.
Okay, this is um, what I have. Mr. De Young made a motion to approve site plan review AIS SPR case twenty twenty-five dash zero four with the following special conditions. One, provide a landscape plan consistent with article ten of township ordinances and consistent with the previous plan. How am I consistent with the previous plan and that it be submitted to the zoning administrator? Two, approval of the fire chief's site plan. Three, meet conditions in nine twenty-six twenty-five letter from Gordy Fraser. Did those all read correctly to you?
He said approval of the fire chief's site plan.
That's how it was.
By the fire chief.
That's how it was worded to me. That's why I wanted to ask, do you mean approval of the fire, approval of the site planned by the fire chief?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anybody want me to go through those again?
I think we're good. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say Pelton is second.
Roll call?
Yes. Stratton?
Yes.
Milnick?
Yes.
Merchant?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Peltonin? Yes, and De Young.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, zoning administrator report.
Hi there. Again. Thank you, by the way. Um, the uh, September report, I've done about twenty permits this month. I think there's fifteen new ones on this. I got five pending. Um, I looked at a couple other sites tonight and on my way into the office. It's um, extremely busy in the zoning department. Um, there's a, a few new projects coming your way. Um, zoning board of appeals had an appeal this last uh, week as well. I know Carl's going to give that update. Um, uh, short-term rental um, complaints have dropped off considerably. And uh, I'm very happy about that. Um, we have gotten a few new ones on um, people camping and campers without permits. Um, anybody that's temporarily camping, supposed to get a land use permit for that. Um, so it's just extremely busy. Um, I don't know if you heard, but Mr. Sees has um, got an offer in on it. There's a possibility that that's going to be purchased in the near future um, to be maintained as a restaurant. The gentleman came in and spoke with me on Monday, so uh, we may have a, a restaurant coming our way. Um, uh, Hudson is looking at adding a uh, structure on their property as well. Um, I've been in contact with Ro as well as J V S, their builder. Um, and I have connected Travis Monnet, Gordy Fraser to touch base with Ro as well, so that we can make sure that they're getting all their ducks in a row as they're um, preparing that. They're working out details on electrical and retention and whatever else. Uh, and uh, Grand Travers Plastics is on hold at this point. Um, we're waiting to find out if they're going to uh, be able to get water from the tribe. As well as they've got a couple of changes they need to make to their plans for the um, a culvert that needs to go in on the driveway before they want to continue and move forward on that project. So those are kind of the hot buttons that are going on. I've got a, a couple of new land divisions that are coming in as well. There's one that's going to be a eighty acre parcel being split ten times off Cook Road. So that one's going to be coming in the near future as well. And I have two possibilities for a couple more zoning board of appeals that may be coming. So any questions about my report? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just discuss it a couple of times. It was brought up about our meetings going so long. Um, I'm going to try to keep us on task. Uh, I'll try to move so long as fast as we can. Um, if I might seem short or curt, it's not because anything you're saying or anything that's going on, it's just in the uh, hopes to move this along. So we're not here any extra time that we need to be. Did you have anything, Green?
No.
Uh, Dennis, you want to talk about the budget real quick?
I, well, I was just reviewing it for purposes of uh, consulting fees to make sure we had that amount in our budget and we do. We allot it sixty thousand for this year and I think so far sixty-five hundred has been used and we have a another P O for twenty-five hundred to discuss today.
Do you want to talk about that at all? About the budget?
Do you want to wait till?
Yeah, we'll talk about that with them.
But the, okay.
Okay. Randy?
Okay. Township board, the two proposed zoning amendments are on the agenda for the next township board meeting, which is October the ninth, next week. We had a public hearing last night on the proposed civil infraction ordinance that was held at Mill Creek. I didn't, I didn't count the number of people, but it was by about seventy-five, maybe more. I, I didn't uh, didn't get a count on that and chief had one, but um, no action was taken on that. It did relay the comments to the town board that the P C is happy with the experience we've had with Leah and handling our, our Zoom and our meetings. Things are going much better than they were before. And then finally, the township board and the supervisor in particular are aware that there's some vacancies coming up on the town board around the P C in the next few months and new appointments will be made to fill those vacancies.
Any questions for Andy?
Uh, it, at the appropriate time of the conversation, whether we would want to continue public comments during a regular meeting uh, agenda and not just public hearings. Did we decide on that?
Um, I'm not sure what you're saying.
For uh, public here, for public hearings, we usually uh, and we have public comments during, on Zoom as well. We accept those, but we haven't made the decision yet to do it for the, any, any meeting. And I was wondering if we were going to discuss that tonight.
Thought we discussed it last time and we decided we were going to do whatever the township board was doing at the time. And that's uh, just viewing.
Public com, during the public hearings.
Uh, viewing and um,
and comment.
And comment on public, on hearings. But on regular meetings, it's just.
This would be viewing. Okay.
Okay, Carol?
Well, CBA had a meeting last week where we uh, considered a request for a variance from people with uh, Island Lake. There's a, this is a unique property. Uh, it is a, uh, the main home is on an island. And the only way to get there is they have to have a uh, a lot on the mainland, so they have access. And they have had that, that hasn't been always in the past, uh, sold to separate piece of property. It's always been sold with the island. So that the people without that island's worthless. People have a home near uh, that island or the uh, property is only fifty foot wide. Uh, it's got some mud on it and that. They, they use it for storage. They have a small storage shed, shed on there. They want to throw that down and put in a twenty-four by sixteen, something like a garage. So they can, in the winter, when they leave, store their car and, and other things in it. And they also have as part of that property, uh, a ramp down to the lake that all the people there, they have an association, all the people there, they need to use that to put their boats in the water and take them out because they can't do it on their own land anymore. The old days you had maybe a twelve-foot boat. Now everybody's got pontoon boats and they simply can't put them in on their own property. So the owner of this, the owner of this land is always let them put it in. So they uh, we have, we granted their request. Uh, they did it, requested a year ago. We granted it, but they didn't get it built. And for whatever reason, uh, they had to resubmit the application and we approved it so that they can put a building on there uh, instead of a house. Our one normally requires a dwelling. But because of the special conditions, uh, in my mind, that I, that lot is part of their land to the island without, they couldn't do it. So that was a very reasonable request to uh, uh, okay, grant the variance.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carol? All right, moving on. Go to the Gipples and Lipsters zoning ordinance.
Yep. You should be ready to let them.
Andy and Bob.
Yes, Andy and I think Stephanie.
Hello, planning commission. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you now.
Okay.
I'll put you up on screen here in just a minute.
Great.
There you go.
All right.
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm here again with Stephanie Osborne, one of our senior planners as well. And we are happy to discuss uh, the first bundle of our uh, proposed kind of zoning project. Um, and this is largely based on um, development review, planned unit development, site condominiums. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen so I can put a presentation on. One moment.
Are you able to share your screen?
I do have the option. I'm just looking for the right window. Sorry. Um, sorry about this. There we go.
So to be clear, we're discuss, we're going to discuss the, the COPUD section update.
Yep, yep. We're discussing that. We're discussing P U D. We're discussing development process and condominium standards.
But this first one would be the COPUD, right?
Uh, well, I. Yeah, I would be part of this tonight. Um, that's actually not the. yeah, it would be part of this tonight. That's actually not the order of this presentation though, sorry. We'll do I hope everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Yep. So what we have tonight is these four key topics. What we're going to do tonight is do something a little interactive. If you have a smartphone, we'd like you to take that out and either log into www.menti.com and enter this code. Or go ahead and use the QR code with your camera to bring up the Mentee app on your phone. If you don't have a smartphone or if you don't feel comfortable, then just let us know. You can verbally participate, your preferences, and we can log things accordingly. So I just wanted to, yeah, I wanted to bring this up. This works really well for getting good engagement and also having it be tracked kind of in our system. What you, what you submit in terms of answers or responses. So I'll, I'll just give you maybe 20, 20 more seconds. It looks like some of you are still maybe typing in your phone. And this is just to summarize policy. It's not, there's nothing official with this. You know, this is not a, you know, any kind of action. It's just to guide Stephanie. All right. Everybody good, it sounds like?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries. It's, it's more difficult being virtual than, than in person and seeing our readiness here.
Andy, this is Kay, the recording secretary. For the purpose of the minutes, what is, could you spell Stephanie's last name for me, please?
Yep, it's O-S-B-O-R-N.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm in. I don't know if I was the last one or not.
I don't really do any of that stuff.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, no, no problem. You can, you can verbally participate and we will, Stephanie and I are taking notes, so no problem. All right. Yeah, it looks like a good amount of you are in. It looks like 11 of you are logged in, so I think we might even have some people from the public, which is nice too. So
Sounds like.
All right, let's get started here.
So will there be voting on this? Is that what?
Yeah, yeah, you just kind of general temperature polling, you know, seeing how you feel about certain things, allowing open-ended responses about things. It's a really good way to just track your feedback because, you know, we might hear, you know, 18 different comments from you in, in, in five minutes, which is really challenging for us sometimes. So yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll see some opportunities in a moment. So as I go through this. All right. So we have the four amendments as part of this bundle. It's the development process. It's condominium standards. It's PUD and COPUD. In terms of the development process, you'll see in the memo, so you saw in the memo that we have some, some, some suggested changes. So some changes that we think are rather uncontroversial, that solve typos, that just clarify references. I don't want us to really dwell too long on, on the suggested changes in the memo. I want to ask you questions about the questions for consideration section of the memo you, we provided. That's, that's really where we're going to narrow down our policy and shape it into eventual ordinance text. So if anybody has any questions about that portion of the memo, please feel free to ask. You can even save it to the end of this presentation, but I think we want to focus tonight on the questions for consideration. So that being said, we're going to jump into a couple of questions here. So in terms of your development process, your site plan reviews, your special land uses, not PUDs, because we'll actually talk about PUDs, but site plan reviews and special land uses, what's currently working well? What's a, do you have any, you know, positive thoughts, positive comments about how the ordinance works with these kind of processes? We'll have another slide that says what doesn't work, so just keep that in mind. You should see it now on your phone and you're able to kind of type in an answer. Very happy to hear you talk about it as well. So, you know, I think, I think looking at it, it's, you have a unique kind of two-step process where you have a preliminary and then a final review. You have a pretty thorough required information set. You know, I, I think maybe, maybe you should keep in mind, is the two-step process working? You know, are you getting clear development? Is the end result of the development? You know, what you reviewed, you know, the first and second time, or are you getting a product or a development in the community that, you know, looks totally different than we, what you thought it would look like? You know, is the required information clear? Are applicants able to meet it clearly or do they struggle to meet it? And you know, that's, that's
Sorry to interrupt. Are these questions that we can answer later?
Yeah.
I mean, so that's something we have to answer right now, right?
Yeah, you don't need to answer this.
I don't know how many of these questions you have, but if we want to get through the evening.
Yeah, okay.
There's no way we're going to be able to sit down and answer these questions and still get through all this, so.
Yeah, okay.
Is this something we'll have access to later too?
I get it. Well, we have the memo that was provided to you, so why don't we just zoom through these slides a little quicker then? And then why don't you ask us any questions you had on, on our memo?
Any concerns?
So for those questions that came up there, is that something somebody put in or did you just type that in?
So somebody would have typed this in. I didn't do it.
Oh, okay.
Stephanie didn't do it. So it looks like it's clear what's needed for submission and it looks like everyone's a fan, or someone's a fan of the zoning administrators report. So those are good, good positives.
Yeah, I think you witnessed some issues earlier today about the requirements and I think that's almost administrative process as much as it is code content, but we're still in the process of improving practice from years ago.
So that being said, I'm going to just jump to what can be improved real quickly. So I think maybe, you know, one of the sentiments there is yeah, getting you know, kind of striking a good balance between what should the planning commission see upfront versus, you know, what, what are things that can be reviewed administratively by the zoning administrator professional? So.
So there's an existing trigger now for site plans below a certain size. The zoning administrator can approve and above, it comes to the planning commission for action.
Yep. So you, and you have that right now. I mean, is it working? Can it be improved? Is there more, you know, should you give more to the zoning administrator so that you, you know, maybe you're not doing as many of the real easy checklist reviews where, you know, there's a lot of just simple checklist items. Whereas you, you as the planning commission should make decisions that involve discretion, that might involve, you know, a, a, perhaps a use that is a little unclear, a little bit undefined perhaps, you know, a, a, a site plan that is for new development, so one that's, you know, pretty substantial in size. Or perhaps one that, you know, is asking for some sort of a waiver, some sort of a, as you see in planned unit development, some sort of exception. So I know a lot of communities are going that way where, you know, they, they really leave the black and white checklist stuff to the zoning administrator, but you leave the discretion to the commission. So I don't know if that's any kind of, if you have any thoughts there, but we kind of get to that with another slide here. But this is good feedback.
I do like this. I like the sound of that.
Yeah, I do too. I guess, I guess, but I would also mention that there's an issue of submittal requirements when you have a relatively simple site plan that needs to be, needs to be reviewed, but you don't want to require them to spend a ton of money on engineering to document a lot of conditions that aren't really important. So that's always a balance too. And I think we have language in there that says that the zoning administrator can waive certain requirements if they're deemed not necessary.
Okay.
Our zoning administrator has been doing a real good job providing us backup information regarding the ordinance, spelling it out for us. And I guess you know, we aren't getting a lot of things appealed. As I think that tells you, our zoning administrator is doing a job working with the people that are applying for permits to work things out. So I think that's one thing that I thought has been going real well with our new zoning administrator.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I, I mean, I see that there's a comment that maybe somebody is indicating the zoning administrator is making up requirements or asking for things that are not required. Well, those kind of things can be appealed. So, you know, if somebody's frustrated with that, then that's something that can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. So I would think the zoning administrator is, you know, sticking to the ordinance. So I've been that zoning administrator before. I know that that's, that sentiment can come about, but you know, you got to stick to the laws. You got to stick to the requirements that are listed in the ordinance. All right, this is really good feedback. One of them was kind of that, that sentiment about giving the administrator a little bit more of the checklist items. So maybe we can figure out a way where, you know, the, the really small stuff doesn't need to go, go before you. And, you know, give them a little bit more approval jurisdiction. All right. One of the, this can be quick. There, there's a section of standards for decisions. So when you're, when you're, honestly, the standards almost apply more for when you are denying a site plan than approving one, because you obviously need to cite the standards and make a finding on why the site plan does not meet the standard in order, in order to deny it. You can also cite that it doesn't meet the zoning ordinance, which is another reason. But there are those standards of site plan review. I'm just wondering, is there anything there that's working or not working? Do you recommend any changes there? Are these standards too? Are they too fluffy? Or are they, are they able to be pinpointed and, and tangible in your reviews? And when I say fluffy, are they too much? Are they too vague? Are they too? Yeah, just vague and visionary rather than tangible and something you can put a finger on. So those are kind, the kinds of, kinds of feedback we're looking for when we ask this question. Okay, that's a good, that's a really good, good point about when a, if a standard's being waived somewhere, you know, you need to present that finding a little bit more clear perhaps, and maybe that's something that needs to be covered in the ordinance.
So as written, these are findings that should be in place at all site plan review actions.
Yeah, yep. You would, you would think that for all site plan reviews that are being reviewed by the planning commission, you need to ensure that these standards are met, and if you are denying them, you need to cite one of the findings. So number four, trying to fire code.
Yep. Was there mention of the fire chief?
Page is in?
What, 59? 59?
Okay, so that's P4, it looks like. Okay. That's good to know. Everyone good here? Sounds like maybe the standards are pretty clear. Maybe, maybe you just don't come across them a whole lot, so maybe, maybe there's just not a lot of practice here in terms of using them to deny a site plan, perhaps. Perhaps denials that you've done are just based on not meeting zoning compliance, which happens as well. All right.
I think a lot of our site plans have been pretty small as well. And now they're not large buildings. We're not reviewing, we're not reviewing big boxes here.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, you haven't had some sort of, perhaps some sort of like externality that you point to such as traffic or noxious dust or noise, you know, or compatibility with the neighborhood that has truly, you know, concerned you to the level where you're denying it. But sometimes those kinds of developments come through and, and it's good to have a clear list of standards in case you do need to deny it one day.
I have a observation that we tend to be coming to wanting nitpicky or micromanaging. And we get off into subjects that we waste a lot of time, I think, talking about that we absolutely don't need to really be doing it to people that are trying to start a business or do something. They shouldn't be interfering with decisions they should be making. How do we avoid that?
That's, I mean, that's, that's, that's very good feedback. I think that's kind of the type of thing we're looking for. If the planning commission is kind of in agreement with that. It's, you know, that's, that, that could be a product of just having too many requirements, too many lists of, of informational requirements in the site plan section. You know, perhaps there's, there's certain items such as, you know, the, the color of the building or whatever, you know, some, you know, that's something I see in a lot of communities that is kind of, you know, kind of flirts the line of overregulation sometimes. And, you know, maybe, you know, that's, that's good feedback. If you are, as a commission, concerned about the level of detail that you are requiring because you feel like you're micromanaging the development yourself, then, you know, maybe just stepping back in us auditing and perhaps finding areas to reduce the number of requirements is, is something we can do from now until when you see a draft text. How does everybody else kind of feel about that? Because I think it's, I think that's a very good point that I would, I think we'd like some kind of consensus on.
Definitely wouldn't hurt to go through it to make sure we don't have anything we don't need in there.
Yeah, I think you could edit that down some in my mind to be a more, more precise. It seems to be a little, a little preachy as far as
Are you talking about the standards?
I, I think honest, I think we're yeah. I think this goes really both towards the informational requirements and the, the standards. I think, I think really both of those are ways where, you know, the kind of the micromanaging point can be reduced a little bit and give, give the applicant a little bit more a little, just a little bit more freedom to do kind of what they want with their development rather than, you know, have it be dictated more by the approval body, you know what I mean? So.
I think I'd like to see it more.
We can definitely look at both.
It's always, oh, it's, it would, it'd be useful if you could provide some indication of what you think we're over-controlling or or we, or that we don't need to be as, have as many requirements. Be as, have as many requirements.
Well, for instance, A, all elements of the site plan shall be harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to topography, size and type of the water unit. That, that's, that to me is very mushy. It's, it's very subjective. And, um, and I don't know that any of us, um, I can't speak for everybody on the, on the commission, but for myself, I don't know that I can be a judge of something being. Of a site plan being harmoniously and efficiently organized. I mean, I can get some idea of organization. And if they're, you know, if, if they're obviously proposing something that's going to impede the. Normal and orderly development or improvement of the surrounding property. It, it just seems to me that that one, that one is a, it's, it covers a lot and it's very vague and it's very subjective.
Yeah.
Very subjective.
I, I think I'd like to see it more like, for instance, I, where it talks about. You know, what's required in Article eleven, what's, you know, I'd like to see more of it. That actually points at, you know, what are we looking at here? So if A is pointing to something, it should be pointing to what it is that we should look at. To make it so we do know what it means to be.
Yeah, I, I think that makes sense in, in maybe A points to, you know, can point to a few things such as the perform, you know, uh. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but like a performance standard, you know, a standard on noise or traffic or, or. Odor and whatnot. Um, so, okay, this is.
For E is, you know, that's a, that's part of the fire department. Should be part of the site plan, we should, I don't think.
Yeah.
It needs to be in here unless it's to make sure that. The site plan is approved by the.
Yep, exactly. And that can just be a procedure, a little, uh, provision as part of the, the whole site plan procedures that the, the fire chief give approval prior to. Uh, certificate of occupancy or the land use permit. Yep.
And I think that, uh, and usually they are, but everything, if you're gonna have a requirement, that ought to be measurable. We, noise, what's noise? You have, I have a way of measuring it, uh, underneath these things. And, um, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about. Berms and heights and all kinds of things that I don't know. I. I, I think that was just way too nitpicky.
No, I think.
So hard, uh, to work it out together that the people, and we have this one individual that, you know, he was just against the whole thing, no matter what. But everything else, these people did a lot. I don't, we were just getting awful picky.
I disagree. I think it was very necessary. We had a whole conversation about half a meeting talking about the screening and the noise and everything like that. And then we talked about berms and trees, and then we get to a site plan and all we have is dots on a map. And that's not enough.
Right. And you know, we're, we're going by what we have now.
Think about it a little, uh, you know, I can recall the previous one we. For an hour about private roads, which was a total waste of time. So it's no matter what we did, they wouldn't, the board would not have approved it.
All right, do you think you have, you need, have what you need there? Kind of idea where we want to go with that?
I think, I think we, we, I think we've got good direction. Yep. So I want to move on to the next slide.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, that was actually the same thing. So you, you're allowed to, the zoning ordinance allows a plot plan for certain instances, which isn't a site plan. It's a more abbreviated review, a more condensed review into more of a, a simple drawing rather than a, you know, a super complex site plan. And so there's some uses that, oh, you know, um, allow the, uh, the, the use of this, the plot plan review. So that's, that's those uses I've, I've marked here. Uh, conceivably, single family residential is probably on here too, because two family is. And single family residential's, um, not required for site plans either. So I could, I could understand, maybe we gotta make it more clear that single family residential is also in this. I assume some review needs to be made for single family residential. Maybe it's just, maybe the, the intent was just require building permits, but not do a, a zoning review. But I would think something needs to be submitted for a single family home. So maybe we make it clear that a single family home also be included in this. Um, are, are there any thoughts there?
I completely agree. I think it's, we need to be looking, or the zoning administrator needs to be given the opportunity to see setbacks. You know, make sure that we're, that the single family residence is, is within the allowed, um, area on the property. So it's.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's odd to me that, that it's not included.
Yeah, and, and the plot plan can show those things, the setbacks and stuff, but tha- that's exactly my thought too is, you know, maybe for a single family home that. This should also, you know, uh, a single family home should be on this list as well. I get it not requiring full site plan review for such, but, um, I think it, some review needs to be, you know, is, is needed. I'm going to, I think the next slide, I can actually allow you to. Yeah, I mean, do you have any other thoughts where, uh, where a plot plan is sufficient? Um, single family home might be one of them. Anything else that, um. You know, that you've, you've seen come across to your desk as a planning commissioner for full site plan review that you thought. You know, this is so minimal, um, and so, you know, ineffectual for our, you know, for our. On any kind of residence or surrounding properties, then why, you know, why are we reviewing this? Okay, dog kennels, should that, do you think that should be a site plan review? As a dog kennel, I think as a, maybe as a commercial dog kennel, I agree that, uh, you know, that should be site plan review. Is that kind of the, the thought there with the dog kennel comment?
Like a doghouse or a dog pen?
I think there's, I think that that should be further defined.
Well, commercial, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What you're saying is, uh, with a single family home, would you?
This is separate from the single family home. This is separate from the sa- single family home.
So this is a, this is a commercial kennel. So this should probably be upgraded to a full site by interview, right? That's the thought.
I think so.
Yeah.
Would you recommend putting commercial?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, honestly, I think this is more of a definition thing than anything. And, you know, just eliminate it from the list, um, and also define commercial dog kennel. Or just commercial kennel, because I think you can have other pets like cats and other domesticated pets, but, um. Have that be a use in your zoning ordinance for particular districts. So, but I get, I get the point, uh, one hundred percent. So I agree with that. Um, anything else, anything where? Yeah, any kind of review that you recently had that you thought maybe wasn't fit for you, but could have been something that the zoning administrator reviewed. Uh, because of the use.
I just wonder, well, I just wonder about the expansion of an existing building where it's just ten percent of the. You know, a small addition to an existing commercial structure or something like that.
Yeah, right. The, the zoning administrator can review the ones smaller than that, so ten percent. Or one thousand square feet, whichever is less, correct? And then everything bigger goes to you. Are you kind of thinking about maybe changing that threshold or what are your thoughts there?
I guess I wasn't sure where that threshold was. I knew there was one, but I couldn't recall what it was. But we can come back to that, I guess, but it's just smaller building additions.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's, yeah, make sure we can keep smaller building additions in the plot plan realm. Rather than the full site plan realm. Okay.
Right.
Okay, this is good feedback. Um, I'm gonna move on to the next slide. And one of the things we saw was home occupations require annual permits. Um, how is that working? Is it working well? Do you like the annual permit process? Is it, is it, um, you know, more of a, um. Three to five to ten year type of renewal?
Where, where is that ordinance?
Yeah, where, where were you at? What page are we on?
Yep.
It's in there.
In the ordinance, that is.
It, it's just one sentence in a.
Cause there's two kinds of home occupations.
Yeah.
Thirteen point seventeen C.
Point seventeen. Um, page twenty-nine or page seventy-nine of one fifty-one. I believe that's what he's.
Seventy-nine?
Seventy-nine, page seventy-nine.
It's, um, I, that's raised, that's seventeen C. Special use provisions for major home occupations. Is that what you're referring to?
Yep, yep, yep. That's exactly what I'm referring to.
And then it'd be number seven on page, uh, eighty. Okay.
I wonder if we do that.
I, I know, that's, I. No, you never, you haven't done it, have you? No. No, we haven't really.
Not being.
Not, it hasn't happened yet, but.
Okay. So I mean, these, yeah, so this is good, this is good discussion, because I think that this was something we noticed that was just very, seemed very administrative. Seemed like kind of an administration, um, headache, you know, having to do this on an annual basis. And is it really necessary? Are you running into issues that require it on an annual basis? But if it's kind of something that, um. You know, you're, you're generally okay with not doing it on a regular basis. I, I agree that maybe it doesn't need to be in your ordinance and it needs to be taken out. So.
Um, possibly the, um, annual review by, uh, the fire chief and home businesses. Do you do that?
Some communities do that. Some communities do more, have more of like a business registration process where they, you know, all commercial businesses. Need a fire inspection and then they expand it to home occupations as well. Technically by fire code, if your home occupancy has any people coming into it, say you do somebody's taxes. Your home can be inspected just because you're inviting people in your home or business aspect. We do not currently do that. I think that's, it would be a, the procedure that we'd have to work on as a township. So, yeah. And so that's a good question. Is that something, you know, the fire? Fire chief and the planning commission would be interested in? Have there been issues where you feel like the health, safety, welfare of the residents are? Not protected because you're not doing it right now? Or is it something you wanna, you know, give a little bit more, um. Uh, leniency towards the home occupant? It's, it's really up to you guys.
You want to get into, is it?
Right, yeah. Maybe add if there was like a complaint.
The, it kind of depends on the home occupation, but you, if you get into problems with particularly your home operation where. There are issues, uh. People are complaining.
Yeah.
If you say, well, you're five years and you really can't do anything about it for five years, you want to be able to correct, get corrections if it's necessary. I don't know that you want to do it every, every year. Uh, but you can't let a problem go on too long. Of course, you could have some regulations that would say that, you know. If there are complaints. A noise or anything or a, a way to handle it. But if you're not getting anywhere. You won't renew it, you know, if it's a two, one or two years, you can cut them off. So we're not renewing it. Uh, we had this come up with the ZBA. They want five years. That's ridiculous. You know, and that proposal.
I think.
So I'd say maybe you wouldn't want to do it every year. Who's gonna do it? Yeah, who, who's gonna do these inspections? They got other jobs, so. I think we need to look at, at it a little bit.
I think we need to have a conversation with the zoning administrator.
Definitely.
Yeah, and find out if she's running into any issues.
Think while we're at it, we can make a better distinction between minor and major home occupations here. I don't, I don't think the line's kind of blurry between the two.
Okay. Yeah, that's a really good point. I, I know some communities are kind of doing that more, so. Um, you know, minor can be in certain zones on maybe smaller lots, and then major can be in certain zones, perhaps on bigger lots.
Yeah, th- th- this is under C, special use provisions for major home occupations. I, I don't know if. If we have one for.
For minor?
Minor, you don't. There's no permit even required for that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, this is good feedback. Um, I'm just gonna quickly touch on condominium standards. This is the, the second of the fourth item. And then I'm gonna pass it over to Stephanie real quick. Condominium standards, so. Have you, have you as a planning commissioner reviewed any site condominiums lately? Do you have much of a? Much of a feel or sentiment on, on how your ordinance is going? I know a lot of communities, these are the type of things that a lot, you know, this is something that some communities don't see for. You know, maybe once every three, four, or five years. So, um, I kind of wanted to see how you feel on a baseline. How your site condominium ordinance is, and if we need to kind of add. A bit more to it when you're reviewing these.
Well, there was one proposed, but it got, it's tied up in court right now, so.
Okay.
The bedroom.
I, I'm not sure if that court case has ended.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know. But there was, there was one in the works, but it's being litigated right now.
Yep. Okay, um, yeah, so just, I want to also just introduce it. So it's like condominiums are a way to divide land. In, in kind of modern day Michigan. So you can do it by building envelope, or you can do it by the kind of a lot. So like a dimensioned legal description of, you know, that's shown on a, uh, that's based off of a condominium plan. So it, it can look like a, like a traditional, uh, you know, subdivision lot. Or, you know, or it can be by building, uh, envelope, um, or like a townhome building envelope. It's just a way to divide land kind of in present day Michigan, based on Michigan, uh, condominium laws. So, um, some communities use it to encourage cluster development where you can then kind of build. With a little bit higher densities if you're preserving space elsewhere per se. Which is good for preserving natural features, um, but some communities, you know, get pretty strict with condominium developments. Because it is kind of the, it's kind of the first step of, um, getting development into an area. So, you know, some of, sometimes environmental impact assessments are really preferred. They want to make sure that if you have these streets and houses are going in. Um, you know, there's the, the surrounding environment's protected, traffic is a concern as well. So. Just wanted to throw some of these out, out, out here, some of these ideas.
We discuss this quite a bit in coming up with our new master plan, I believe. Uh, but we haven't had. Any, uh, condo development in years in our township. And so is, is this a priority? I don't know, uh.
So, and that's a good point. So I think we want to be very brief on our text for this, you know. Stephanie and I might try to, you know, plug something in here where, you know, you might review, or you might have the power to, um, you know. Request more detail on one of these, but you know, we're probably not going to write an, uh, an amendment that. Uh, totally, um, overhauls it. So I, I do think that's a good point.
So it, I know there's a cluster development option in the PED section. It would be my mind, great to have it in the condo stuff too, which is. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, is probably the more. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you wanna look at it, is probably the more popular way of developing property in Michigan these days.
Yep, yep, that's a good point, so right now, you you can give some of the cluster relief through a PUD. Um, which is a good, good, good clarification, but perhaps expanding that cluster ability into this uh process as well might be, might be helpful.
So the thinking would be, there would be a modest. Density bonus in exchange for clustering residential development and preserving some natural features or open space or.
Yep.
Or.
Yeah, I think, and I, and I think you would wanna maybe make it, you know, require a finding of preservation of open space, so you know, if you're preserving. Fifty percent of the property for open space, you know, you can then. Double the density on the other fifty percent of the land in terms of lot size and whatnot, you can shrink the lot sizes. So that you are, um, you know, you're getting the same density across the board of the entire site, um, but um. You know, you're you're able to to develop more dense in the particular section because you're preserving.
Are any of you aware of the homes that just went up on Angel Road? Just uh east of Elk Lake Road? Twenty-seven acres, I talked to Deb a little bit, that. Those are two prefab homes. That was, you know, approved, I guess, by Deb, but how many? How many more homes could go in there and and? We don't have any real say on it, because the way our. Our agriculture district, just a lot of them in one acre. Uh, but is that something that, you know, maybe would be coming into a, uh, say condominium? The guy that owns that land, and I understand those lots have not been broken up, you know? But I just wonder if maybe that is something we need to get into pretty quickly. But we don't know that that gentleman has plans for any more, any more homes or not, I know, uh. Roberto Garcia's a little concerned about it. Uh, so maybe something like this is something we need to look into, I don't know.
What do you have next for us?
Okay, so next slide, I'm actually gonna pass this over, that was a repeat. I'm gonna pass this over to Stephanie, so Stephanie's gonna take it home from here, um, can Stephanie? Does Stephanie have permission to share the screen? Zoom administrator?
Yeah, if you can stop your share, and then Stephanie can start hers. Can you hear us, Stephanie?
Hi, yes, I think. I think I'm working except for the video, but that's okay, you don't have to see me, um. You'll be like.
And then are you able to share your screen there, Stephanie?
It looks like, yes, let me.
That should be down at the bottom, near the middle there, there you go.
All right, hopefully you can see that, okay?
Yep.
Okay, beautiful, um, so as Andy mentioned, we're gonna continue on this, um. This mentee helps us uh develop the policy language that will.
Quick, Stephanie, do you wanna, do you wanna click present?
Oh, yeah.
Just click present at the top corner, so so that they can see it better, thank you.
Uh, yes, okay, um, so yeah, so this uh mentee helps us uh get feedback from you that'll help us draft the language. Uh, that we'll bring back to you at the next meeting, so moving into the planned unit development, and we did identify a couple of. Um, places that we would suggest changes, again, these are um things that we don't think require a whole lot of discussion. So providing information that's required by the MZEA within your ordinance, um, that's a pretty easy cleanup item. Um, kind of consolidating, or excuse me, removing mentions of special use permits, um, since the PUD process. Is um separate and has its own approval and agreement process, you don't have to um tie in that other process of special use permits, so. Um, that'll help clarify the language. And then um updating the subdivision control ordinance, um, specifically section six point three, um, so that it's clear about. Uh, what a PUD can and can't. Uh, apply for in terms of variances, um, PUDs don't really get variances, it's all determined by this um negotiation approval agreement process, so. Um, those are, those are the items that we came up with for um changes, but we would like to hear from you on a couple of items. Um, so in uh the, the ordinance currently, it says the main purpose of the PUD in the township is to preserve open space. Um, but we know PUDs can do other things and are very effective at providing other things, um. So I'm curious if you're interested in the PUD having possibly more than. The purpose of preserving open space or simply keeping that as like its sole purpose, um, and. The reason we're asking this is if, if there are other purposes that you think the PUD could serve that would uh support the township. We can add in um some of the the uh considerations for review and approval. That would support these other um purposes, so I see, uh, we got one up right away, um, facilitating mixed-use development, so. Um, great, uh, PUDs often do that in many communities, um, developer wants to have some residential, some commercial. Um, kind of in the same, same spot, same area, and so um the PUD can do that, and that. Is clearly different than just simply preserving open space, um, but it could also. Encourage the preservation of open space. How are people talking about that? Oh, go ahead.
I don't know if it would be part of this consider, the consideration in a PUD, but when there's a um, a large. Development of maybe twenty homes, instead of each home having its own well. Is there a possibility of having, I've seen it in other subdivisions, that they take five homes, have one. Water tank or a well uh for their five homes.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so shared. Shared systems.
Yeah, shared systems, is that um. Something that could be addressed in, in a PUD?
Yes, yeah, I think we could um talk about, uh, that that would most likely be like. More along the lines of like a community benefit that we provided, right, so you could have a shared system. Um, we have another community that's looking at shared systems and how, if you want it. You know, it can increase density, um, so you could allow, you know, have that tie in. Um, that's a good one.
We, we don't have any infrastructure in our township, uh, in terms of water lines or sewer lines at this time. So, in, that's where I'm wondering how maybe we could uh tie in. Smaller units of water uh in connecting lines. To to bring service to maybe other areas that might not have it, then, um, you know. I don't know, just to to make a, a community service line for along seventy-two, our um business district. I, I don't know the, I don't know the mechanics of it.
Sure, yeah, and we can, um, we can. Look at how to um include that in your PUD, um, so that that's something that could be provided as a benefit. Um, or possibly, uh, we'll look at, we'll look at the language and how to, how to work that in, and next time you can tell us if that. Um, looks good to you or not, I also see um addressing odd or conflicting district intersections. Um, so yes, we can talk about PUDs, how they can, um, they might have different um screening requirements or buffering requirements. Um, than what you have in your ordinance, if you uh feel that that's necessary, which it looks like, um, that could be the case. Um, so we can look at that, and then varying density and housing types, um. That uh is often, we often see PUDs that um can. Or PUDs can often allow for communities to have different densities, sometimes because they um do some sort of uh mixed use, or. Um, because they uh build the building taller, uh, but provide more open space or other amenities. Um, so these are good, um, and I'm, I'm glad to see just kind of where your, um, your interest in. Are in uh what you, what sort of projects you would like to see. Um, okay, and then addressing legacy PUDs, so PUDs that are already existing, I think, does someone wanna unpack that a little bit more? What do you mean by? That, let's make sure I'm on the right track here.
That was my comment, I guess there's a number of PUDs that were approved before, I I don't know that. The process, or I don't know. What was done before, but we wanna, I'm not sure that it's consistent with the ordinance, and so I just wanna make sure that we're. Aware of what was, what's been done with the PUDs before. In development approvals.
Okay, great, thank you for that explanation. Um, and then we have another comment about the buffering, okay, so it sounds like some screening, buffering, um, thinking about how to make PUDs compatible with. What's around them, um, particularly when we get to uh districts that have different intensities than what the PUD is offering, great. Uh, we'll continue on here, um, so the next uh comment uh aligns with. Question two, um, under the questions for consideration in your packet, so right now, um, the planning condition, commission. Uh, may allow for additional lots or units up to fifteen percent of the gross acreage, and so we're curious if, um. You know, is this sufficient to uh incentivize someone to use the PUD? Or should, do there need to be other incentives built in here, so we, um, we've suggested things like allowing smaller lot sizes, clustering. Um, increasing the building height, and then other land preservation techniques, um, you know, what, what do you see as, um. What would you like to allow, most like to allow, um, in terms of incentivizing developers to use a PUD? And if you think that everything's good as it is, let me, let us know that too, that's fine, that's good feedback.
What about, in a plan, plenty of development, uh, parks, uh, playgrounds, uh, trails for walking, things like that, uh. You know, the thoughts that should be included in it, depending on the size.
Yes.
Um, and again, like I say, there's some different sized houses and that, that's all. Things, I guess, on how many acres you have, how many. How much land you have, what you do with it.
Yeah, so I think that would fall more under the amenities that would be provided as a benefit to the users of the site. As opposed to what are we incentivizing the developers with in order to do the PUD? So the, the developer might say, okay, I have this extra land, and it's required that I provide X, Y, Z recreational amenities, some of which you mentioned. Um, but what is, why would they choose to do a PUD over, um, you know, some other type of development? Um, option that they have within the township, um, you know, because the PUD does require. As, as you noted, some additional recreation, so how can we incentivize people to provide those nice amenities, the developers to. Provide those nice amenities for the users and for the community, um, you know, what are they getting in return, what are you most willing to, to kind of trade them? So I'm seeing smaller lot sizes seems to be um a more popular answer in clustering, um, and building height less so, increasing the building height. So that's, that's good feedback there.
I guess I would, I would just add to that, though, I would hope that the. Incentives are substantial enough to draw the developer to do a PUD, because I've seen many, many times, and you probably have too, where. PUDs are put into zoning ordinances and seldom used, because the incentives aren't. Aren't appealing enough to a developer, because they would rather take thirty acres, cut it into a condo subdivision and move on.
Right, yes.
Do a cookie cutter thing, and we'd rather have them do a PUD and and have something more creative and more interesting, you know, um, and unfortunately. I don't think that happens as much as we'd like.
Yes, understood, and I think that's the root of this question, you know, um, right now, you really only allow for additional lots or units up to fifteen percent, but if there were. Options, more options for them to have benefits, um, and I guess this is a question, it, have you seen the fifteen percent not being sufficient? Um, should, and should that be increased, so should they be allowed to have twenty-five percent um increase or something higher?
I don't think there's enough experience here with that.
Okay.
But I might be wrong, I.
That's fine.
Just seen many places where PUDs are in zoning ordinances and seldom used.
Yeah. Um, well, maybe we'll, we'll touch base with your zoning administrator and see if she's had any conversations that have, with developers that haven't made it to the planning commission that, um. May, they may have said that's not enough of an incentive for us, so we'll do a little bit more research on that.
Uh, could you provide us some locations of um? Of, of PUDs that, uh, in the surrounding area that we might uh be able to look at?
Um, yes, I believe one was in your memo, maybe not, um. I believe, let's see. Um, I don't have any off the top of my head, but we'll have, we could probably provide you with some.
Thank you.
I believe there was a horse farm recently that was a PUD, but I could be wrong, I'll look again.
Um, are you talking about the one on Bates Road? It, um, that would be, that's not the typical PUD in our township.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, we can do a little bit more digging and um, see what we can give you as examples. Okay, um, ooh. Sorry, that one's a blank, okay, so, um, the minimum lot size currently for a PUD is twenty acres. Um, we're wondering if twenty acres is too large, if you think smaller lots might be, um. Acceptable for a PUD, to be considered for a PUD, so here we have a sliding scale, it goes from half an acre all the way up to your current. Um, twenty acres, and if you would uh indicate what you think is, you know, a good minimum lot size for a PD, of course, they could go up from there. Um, if you think twenty is still. Good, you wanna see, um, you know, these sorts of developments to occur only on large parcels, that's fine. If you wanna open up more options, a smaller parcel size would be um appropriate, so. Seeing, I saw a two acre, I see a three acre. Okay. Seeing some more towards the twenty acre. We got an average right now of three point four acres, we'll probably make it a whole number somewhere in there. Okay, great. Um, let's see. So then, um, and we, we discussed this a little bit previously, um, but section seven point two discusses recreational uses. Um, these uh have to be, some of them have to be incorporated into the open space, so for example, pu, um, the paths are, um. For walking are required in a planned unit development, but you can have other things such as um sports courts. Um, or playgrounds or other sort of recreational uses, um, that are not required, but um could be included. Uh, as part of the planned unit development, so our question to you is if you would like to see any changes, would you like to require more things? Would you like to require fewer things, would you like to, um. You know, really call out more things that you would like to see, um. Just kind of open-ended here, where, what direction can you give us here in terms of recreational amenities, since that's such a key part of PUDs?
That's gonna depend on the kind of a community. Uh, you're gonna have, uh, is it gonna be for seniors, for young families? Uh, if you're gonna start a one with homes for young families, less expensive. Homes, you would want playgrounds, maybe some little trails, uh. I know that there, there's. Been some, I think we had surveys that have said, you know, trails, bike paths. Things like that, but it, it's gonna depend on the kind of a development, uh, age group you're looking at.
Yeah, I agree with that, our, uh, we've discussed several times trying to have. Uh, more children in the communities to support Mill Creek Academy, um. To keep it open, to keep the school open, and so if there. To keep it open, to keep the school open. And so if there would be, um, amenities in, uh, PUD. For young families that would, um, support the local elementary school.
Great. And I see a couple other things, bike pass, um, and then a call for flexibility. So understanding that PUDs, um, there's already give and take, they're expensive. Um, so giving them some flexibility in what they do present to you, that's good to know. Um, and then I see a lot here, uh, green space, dog park, outdoor gathering spaces used by lots of people in the neighborhood. Great. Okay, other comments on this one? Alright, we will continue on. Um, so that wraps up our discussion on the PUD. We'll now move into, do you guys, do you call it the COPUD, COPUD? How do you refer to this?
COPUD.
COPUD, okay, thank you. So we'll move into the COPUD. Um, so we had two suggested changes here. One is not actually within the zoning ordinance. The first is to, um. I guess it would, you could update the zoning ordinance to note that this, um, designs example book is available online. Um, and make sure it's posted online. I think that's, uh, really useful in terms of accessibility and, um, ease of use for developers. Um, but then we've also, uh, suggested that you add a specific section dedicated to the conditions that create PUD eligibility. And then a separate section for the standards of review and approval. Um, that just better aligns with how the MZEA is organized. And then if an applicant is familiar with that, they may more easily be able to find, um, what they're looking for in terms of. You know, are they eligible and what do they need to do? Um, so those are just two kind of organizational changes, nothing, nothing major there. You have the content. In terms of the policy considerations, um, we wanna know what's working. So just kind of open ended, uh, in terms of process and standards. You know, have you, have you had experience with this? And if you have, um, what went well? In terms of the process and then also the outcomes, was the outcome the sort of project that you wanted?
Well, I'll start from my experience here. I, I, I think the language in the COPUD district is confusing and difficult to implement.
Okay, that's great feedback.
It's not clear what, the COPUD district is five hundred feet on either side of seventy-two as defined. But I think it was intended to be an overlay district, um, but I'm not really sure, cause it doesn't say. And, but then it, but then the action is rezoning, I, I believe. So I'm, I'm curious on your take on this thing because it's. Re, picking it up for the first time. I know there's experience, they've approved projects here under the COPED, but, um.
Yeah, I did look at your zoning map. You have a cou- just a couple parcels, like two or three, I think, um, that are, uh. Have been rezoned, um, to the COPUD designation. It is an overlay. So it's, um, it is a, it is unique that it has this overlay with kind of a PUD. Underlay, if you will, um. So I, yeah, I see there's limited experience in this commission in terms of approving that, um, which is fine. Um, only a couple.
I think you're being charitable in the way you say it's unique. I, I think it's.
I mean, is this, is this something that you're interested, I guess maybe we should back up totally. Is this something you're interested in? Keeping or is it something that really needs to be kind of scrapped and rethought? Um, and redesigned, uh, in terms of what you wanna see along M seventy-two?
Well, um.
I don't think we know what we want.
I'm not, I'm not sure if this is salvageable or not, quite honestly. I think there are some good development standards in here. But the approval process is confusing and, uh, unclear. And it, it defines, it says both ways, um. So I, I don't know what the thinking was when this was created. But obviously you were tripped up on it as well, um, and I think most planners would be, so. In terms of the, the process.
In the interest of time management, how much, what do you have yet?
Uh, I think I have three questions left.
Alright, let's try to move them along then.
Yep.
So, so we need to fix this. I mean, this is our, this is our front door. This is where a lot of very visible development will happen. Um, and yet we have this COPUD which is wonky in my mind.
Okay, I think that's, that's really helpful for us. Um, so I'm gonna skip the next slide, which is what could be improved, cause you've kind of hit on that it's unclear. You've hit, you've emphasized clearly that it is unclear and needs to be, um, rethought probably. So whatever this ends up being, if we're thinking about the same corridor, M seventy-two, we're thinking about that area. Um, I think this question is really gonna help direct how we might rethink the, the, um, language. Uh, so, um, here I'm looking, I'm hoping that you'll rate, um, each of these, uh, kind of purposes. Um, and maybe there's another purpose that we want to include in here. But, um, these purposes are what the COPUD is currently, um, meant to do. And so I'm curious what, which of these you think, um, that area should still do? Um, and then if there's anything else that this overlay should do, um, let's talk about that briefly.
Well, let me throw something else out there too, while we're, as part of this, and that is, I've not seen the Whitewater Township. Commercial industrial design example book. Has anyone else seen it? So, so the implication or the inference that there's some kind of a design guidelines that have been done. That is, that is the guiding principle here i- i- is not practically followed. I know that's a showstopper, but that's the way it is.
Thank you for pointing that out. We can, we'll make a note of that. Um, looks like we've got at least one ranking, one person ranking here, um, showing that. Encouraging economy efficiency and the use of land, uh, would be the main purpose or a, a key purpose. Oh, we got some other people chiming in, um. Alright, so now we've got providing applicants with greater flexibility. So this again leans on that PUD idea. Um, and then a couple others in here. Good, seeing some movement. Um, for those of you or for anyone who has noted other, what other sort of purpose would you like to see this area, um, achieve?
I think also I would mention that we talk about a M seventy-two corridor plan, which we don't have. Um, but that is something long term that we're hoping can get done with. Participation with the MPO or with MDOT or some kind of a joint effort to define. Not only the access management issues, but the. Design characteristics and landscaping and building form can, questions that are unanswered right now. Along seventy-two.
Yes, I did read a lot about that in your master plan, so I, yes, I think that, um, should be tied in in some way at a minimum. Alright.
As far as, there, there is no vision right now for how that is, what build out looks like on seventy-two.
Alright, well, maybe, yes, we will, we'll put some thought into how to. Tie these things together and, um, give you some language to maybe help direct some of that development if, when it comes. In the interest of time, I'm gonna continue on, um, and actually maybe we don't even. Well, okay, let me ask this question, cause it, it probably is relevant. So currently, as you noted, um, the overlay, uh, is for. Currently is for parcels of land fronting M seventy-two, um. Of, uh, if the parcel is greater than the five hundred feet, that's, that makes the overlay. It says the overlay may extend, be extended, um, beyond that, that five hundred feet. So I'm curious if, um, you know, if, if we're gonna kind of rethink this whole thing. How would you, where would you want the overlay in terms of setback from M seventy-two? Would it be the whole parcel? Would it be? Um, uh, would it still be the five hundred feet? And if that's the case, under what conditions? Should it be further extended back? Um, thoughts on this?
Uh, I'm, there's, uh, north of M seventy-two is old M seventy-two. And I believe in terms of, um, design of the roads. Uh, they are thinking that old seventy-two would become business M seventy-two. To, just like in many other, uh, cities and small towns, you have a, a, a truck route and a business route. So if you're talking north of M seventy-two to old M seventy-two. Possibly that would be all, uh, commercial between those two roads. If, if the, um, topography allowed it, there's some swamp in there.
Okay. That's helpful to know. Any other comments on this one?
I was trying to type this, but I would, but I think your point about five hundred feet versus. The entire parcel is a good one for discussion, whether, you know, the five hundred feet stops. And you have maybe part, maybe a whole parcel that's, that's in that five hundred feet, maybe part of the next one. Or maybe it's part of one. So we should really think about the existing configuration of parcels on seventy-two. And, and think about whether that's what's better.
We'll let you sleep on it for a month and then we bring you language. Maybe we can readdress that, um. I'm seeing that it should be an option, not a mandate, and extensions should be the same. Um, and some, yeah, it looks like maybe some flexibility is needed here in kind of this, this discussion. Um, like I said, we'll, we can circle back when you see some draft language, um. We can go on.
Do you think that, um, for next month, you could give us these questions in advance?
They are, they are in your memo. Um, these are, these are the questions for consideration that are in your memos. Um.
Okay.
We put them on a mentee to, so you could see the responses and that sort of thing. Um, so yeah, next, next month, they'll be the same way. They'll be under that questions for consideration that we provide for the packet. Um, I think we can skip this one for now in the interest of time. Um, I am curious about this one though, and this is, uh, my last one. So, um, uh, we work in another, I work in another community that has a, um, corridor similar to M seventy-two. That they've worked really, um, diligently to have a consistent look. And so I'm curious if that's important to you or if you're more focused on, um. Letting the developments have the flexibility to bring what they bring to the community. Um, with, what, within whatever meets your other standards. Give you a minute here.
So in a, a consistent look sometimes can be done by, uh, landscaping. And setbacks, uh, landscaping in the setbacks, the requirements of trees and things like that. In, uh, Williamsburg, Virginia. Uh, you can drive down the road and there, uh, there are shopping centers and restaurants. And doctors' offices and medical buildings. But when you drive down the parkway, all you see is trees. When you turn in, then you see all the buildings. There is enough of a buffer zone that you always look. That you're out in, um, a rural area when in fact you're in the middle of a city. So, um. I, I, I know we wanna re, maintain our rural character and you can always do it with trees. Um, so. That, that's just my, my preference.
Thank you, yeah, so, um, trees, landscaping, like you said, um. The community that I have also, or that I was referring to also has standards for a fence, um, type that's required. For building, like architectural design, um, and materials, um, and then also lighting. So, you know, we, we can think about those options and how important they are to you when we come back, um, next time. But, um, this gives us some direction and it looks like maybe more flexibility here. Um, with the exception, maybe the landscaping, uh, that seemed to be a strong call for that. So, um, thanks for your input. Um, I'll just give a quick moment here. Was there anything that you felt that we should really focus on that, um, did not get, uh, brought up in our questions or in the memos? That we should be considering when we, uh, go to draft some language for you for next month?
So timing wise, we're looking at draft language for next month, is that what you said?
Yes, that's what we'll be aiming to do. We'll take your feedback from here, bring you some draft language. And then, um, likely need to massage it from there, um, at the next meeting.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, um, last question for you. I think we had discussed a separate meeting date, um, from your usual planning commissions. And we can talk offline about that, but I didn't know if you wanted to shore that up while everyone's here or, um. Or leave it for, uh, email coordination.
It is the, um, y- your presentation, uh, one meeting. And then the, the following meeting is the feedback, uh, and of your comments and drafts. And then, a- and at that same meeting, will be, will we be giving a new bundle to follow up on the next meeting? Um, or is it just a meeting with the presentation and the feedback and, and, uh, um. Drafts or whatever at another meeting and then that's, that, you're not gonna do a loop on. You're just gonna do a loop on one bundle and then a loop on another bundle. You're not gonna overlap there.
Yeah, yeah, correct. And I'm gonna, I'll, I can jump in and maybe Randy can too. Um, but I think the goal here is to focus on one bundle at a time, get one bundle across the finish line. And then, uh, focus on a new topic later. So I don't think any more interat, uh, overlapping, uh, with, yeah.
We will have to get back to you on a.
Okay.
Update, I'll send it out to everybody because, um. It's just too hard to do it now. We don't really have the time, so. We're gonna have to move on, but we will get that back to you as soon as possible. Are you talking about a meeting yet this month? Or are you talking about a meeting, an extra meeting for next month?
Well, if we don't, so, so we can, we can go to, we can do next month if we don't figure out a meeting for, for a new special meeting for next month. Um, but I think.
My, I guess my question is because I'm only available the first two month, two weeks of the month. This month, uh, while we're in here, so will you be ready for us if we can do it the next week or the, or the next?
I think that's too soon. I think at the soonest, we could get you some draft language for your November. Uh, what is it, November third, November fifth meeting?
So we'd be talking at a, we'd be talking about a second meeting in October then.
We would be thinking about, it's, I think, a special meeting in November, sometime November, okay. You know, I don't think, Stephanie, I can give you language that quickly, but November would work.
November fifth is our next meeting.
Okay, we'll go back with you on that then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, uh, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Is there anything else on this, Randy, before I can move on? Alright, Rine, O W G.
Okay, so, um, due to the fact that our, the PC meeting is October first. The, um, ROWG has not had their second meeting yet. It's next week. Um, but what we have been doing is, um, the research on, uh, communities in Michigan. And I have a series of notebooks back here that have hard copies of the research that's been turned in so far. And then I've also shared with you in, um, OneDrive, uh, electronic copies that I have so far. So if you need a hard copy, you're welcome to take one, but I do need them for the October seventh, um, ROWG meeting. So I'd need you to bring them back here before that. So let me know at the end of the meeting. Um, a lot of interesting information, uh, and level of detail, um. Is appearing in terms of definitions, um, fees. Regulation in terms of licensing and, um, also whether, uh, you do like a district type of, um. I'm trying, what word would you use? Approach, right. A district approach in terms of whether STRs are allowed in every district or only certain districts? Or, um, one community that we've looked at, uh, does an overlay, uh, type of, um, situation. So they're controlling the number of, um, short-term rentals in certain areas of the township. So that's, we'll have the rest of those reports on, um, for the October seventh meeting, and I'll be sure to share those with you in, in OneDrive again.
Okay. What, um, for your next meeting, what, would, uh, what do you think your goals will be?
I think, um, what we're gonna start focusing on is the survey. And, um, because, uh, as Randy mentioned to me, um, the survey for the, uh, master plan, created kind of a framework for, um, the first workshop. And so I think that's probably what we'll focus on.
That sounds good. Anybody else have anything for?
Probably there are steps to find support also for the ROWG to help with.
Yeah, I've gotten a, um, I've gotten a, a quote from, um, Giffords Webster, Missouri. Uh, and, um, and I'm, I'm also speaking with, um, a resident who is a retired planner, uh, about help with the survey. So, um, the, the quote is quite high. I need to find out what kind of reaction I get in terms of the town board.
I almost forgot. I think Green's looking for another volunteer.
Oh, I am. Yes.
From the board here.
For the ROWG, because I'd like to have two people from the planning commission, one being myself and, um, and another person from the planning commission to help, uh, with David's resignation. We've, I've lost that person. So if anybody's interested, let me know.
To do what?
To work on the, the research committee with me. To work, to work on the, the work group. The research committee that we've got set up.
Doing what?
We're researching, we're doing the research for the short-term rentals. And so we're gonna be working on, uh, survey and also on, um, workshops, creating workshops for, um, input from the community.
Did you get any more letters to put on your chart, uh, for and against, uh?
No.
So that was the, so it was roughly two to one against. But less than that.
Well, that's just, um, the letters that I had. You still have, I still haven't totaled and I'm going to do that yet. All the people that spoke. So it's, it's not the whole picture there.
Some of the same people too, you know, they've spoken and they sent an email. So you don't want to double cover it. So that hasn't changed?
No. Yeah. But it's not complete yet.
Well, David was, um, David didn't make it to the first meeting, uh, because he was out of town. But, um, the idea was that, uh, David was going to take over as chair and I would be his support person when we got into capital improvements. And so it's kind of a partnership like that where we, um, trade off, uh, running the, the work group based on whatever topic we're researching.
Okay. Think about it and try to get back whether yet and all right. Thanks. Let's move on.
Is David still available to attend your next meeting or is he completely, you know, as far as you know?
Um, well, my understanding is, uh, because he can't attend the meetings in person, um, for the planning commission, that's why he had to step down. Yeah. So, so
Just wasn't sure if his, is his resignation take effect already?
I thought it said mid-October.
Yeah.
Okay. So I didn't know if that meant he's still on.
Right.
That could join you for a meeting next week.
I don't know. I'll have to look into that. Okay. So that's a no.
And if you need somebody for the next one and nobody's volunteered yet, I'll come in.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Let's move it on. Winerys and tasting ordinance. Josh was, um, very nice and, and giving us a bunch of, uh, good advice for that.
Could you tell us the page number that you're?
Ninety-five and ninety-eight.
Ninety-five and ninety-eight. Okay.
What's up? Yeah, if you would please, good.
The interest of time. I'll be quick. Um, so I don't know if many of you know, but before I was fire chief, I was in the wine industry for sixteen years. So I was a winemaker for sixteen years on Old Mission Peninsula. Um, and also I worked, um, in Potaski for six years. I helped start a winery. Um, so saying that, obviously I have a little bit of background in this. Uh, I was on Old Mission Peninsula when the lawsuit began and, uh, so I kind of have some background in both sides of the coin. I served as a board member for the Michigan Wine Collaborative. So we represented all of the wineries in the state. So I drafted up, I, uh, Sadie sent me the winery ordinance to review. Um, I kind of looked at it from the standpoint of what didn't work on Old Mission and what caused the issues that we're seeing. And, um, I got a couple of bullet points. The, the biggest things that stood out to me were our fifty acre requirement. Just because, uh, that got tossed out due to, uh, exclusionary zoning. And, uh, from the simple fact that honestly, some of my best fruit came from one or two acre parcels. And some of them have mom and pop little tasting rooms in them as well. Um, event limits, building size, food service, events, you know? We had talked at length a little bit, um, just inter, as I've been educating some people on the planning commission on this, um, with events, we want to be careful on winery sponsored versus private because somebody could be doing a wine dinner versus, uh, like, did you say like an ATV event? Like we were talking about, like, yes, maybe we can't do that, but we don't want to stop somebody from saying, I'm gonna do a wine tasting event, which is focusing on my product that I'm producing here. And we're just trying to sell my product through that instead of saying, we're gonna have a bunch of random, you know, UTVs, ATVs driving through my property. That, how does, that doesn't necessarily sell your product. So I'm trying to define that. Um, traffic enforcement, again, outdoor uses, noise, you know? And obviously the biggest thing is that agricultural preservation. We're trying to preserve the agriculture. I'm a huge supporter of the winery ordinance, but I want to make sure we do it correctly. Um, I've kind of directed a few people to, to go look at, uh, Bear Creek Township in Potaski. It's very, very similar to Whitewater in the sense of it borders Potaski. So it borders a growing community, but also it is very agricultural. It has, um, Uncle Bill's Farm Market. It has a couple of wineries. And a community very much like ours. And so they kind of followed the same process. So I think it would be, while I know we want to move quickly, I think that this is because there's a lawsuit going on in the state in regards to, you know, how the language was, I think we should do our due diligence. And because we are so close and so closely related to it. Do I think that this winery ordinance is going to bring in a Chateau Grand Travers or Chateau Chantel sized winery? No, it's not. It's going to allow the small farmers in our area to utilize fruit that they may not be able to sell on market and turn it into a product and then also sell that to support their livelihood. We are, if you think about growing, if you draw a line at Yuba Road, that's kind of the outskirts of where you can plant vinifera grapes and have them survive. We do get a little too cold. While it can be done, I don't think somebody's gonna come in here and plant fifty acres of vinifera at fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars an acre to open up a giant winery. I just, I don't think that this, that's not what this winery ordinance is gonna do. And I, and I know that there's that fear. What this does allow is say a winery in Traverse City, and this is what we have to look at, is saying, would we allow a winery to open up a tasting room on Old Seventy-two? Just in a secondary satellite location? Because we are a community in which people are driving through to head into Traverse City. And so do, do we want to allow that? Or is this strictly for the farmers growing in our township for them to utilize a product that they already have? So I think those are things that we just have to define as. But I think there's still work to be done. Um, I, you know, I, there's a lot of, it's everywhere in Michigan. You can find a winery ordinance all the way down, all the way up the coast. So we should be looking at all of them and, and talking to those townships and the pitfalls that they went through because they've obviously sent their stuff through legal. And so we should be looking at that and also doing the same. So. But if you guys have any questions, I mean, feel free to reach out to me. Um, I, I'm, I'm an open book. I'm, I'm gonna tell you what I think about it. And I, like I said, I'm very pro it only because I did it for sixteen years. And I honestly, any winery that opens up in the community, I'm gonna support and stand behind. So.
Yeah, the, the building size, the number three, the, the square footage was limited to the size of a tasting room, not the whole operation.
Yep.
Um, that's
It still seems too small to you?
I mean, two thousand square feet isn't a ton of room when you think of the amount of people that come up here to do wine tasting. I mean,
Well, yeah, but ciderys, I mean, this is larger than, um, a local cidery. For the, I mean, this is, this, this would be the size, probably their whole, uh, whole building, maybe.
Okay. Yeah.
So I, that's what
I'm just gonna ask, cause you have a business in the room and this doesn't have anything to do with the ordinance. How big is your current facility, square footage wise? I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get an idea of.
I don't know.
So, um, I just know, cause I came from a winery that had a very small footprint.
Yeah.
And, um, when you do become successful and you do outgrow that footprint, it becomes very painful to run your business because you have to turn people away. And I don't want to say that that's what I love for somebody to start a winery and have, have them become super successful. I don't, I don't want, it would be better to have a little bit wider of a space to be able to grow into.
Yeah. So when, when you spoke about the Yuba District, is, are you, you said that was the, like the, the beginning east or the, or the end of the west?
It's not the end all be all growing line. It's just that the benefit of the warmer water. Cause what we get is a lake, not to bore everybody with science, but our water stays warmer longer into the fall. So it stops. So the grapes are allowed to keep growing further into the season. And in the summer or in the spring, the lakes are colder. So it keeps it cooler. So we don't deal with frost. That zone kind of, it starts to diminish. You can see it when you go look at where the fruit trees are. And I mean, I'm, you know, St. probably can speak to this as well.
Yeah.
Uh, um, but you're not gonna, you know, you have some people that grow vinifera over off of Torch Lake, but they have the benefit of the microclimate from that lake. And so it's very specific.
Yeah, it's a microclimate. Yeah. Uh, we, we grow grapes, so, but it's just for our personal use.
Yeah. So it's different when you get to the, 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 um, you know, European varietals, they're very susceptible to, like, they can only tolerate down to negative five.
Yeah.
And so that, that doesn't take us long to get to negative five in the winter. So.
So I, I, I don't want to go on with the conversation too long because it gets kind of wonky, but
We could do that in private.
Yeah.
I can educate you guys on all of that at some point. But yeah, I just think that it would be, and I'm willing to help if you want me to reach out to my contacts that I have across the state, um, to grab the ordinances that they have to then kind of meld it all together before we.
Yeah. I, I think the, the, um, the things that you said were missing from the draft, that, uh, the noise, our, our noise ordinance really needs to be tightened up and it needs a measurable.
But again, that, that goes back to things that, I mean, Deb and I have talked about at great length is like this ordinance, if we do do it, it needs to reference the other ordinance.
Yeah.
Because that, we need to, we need all of our stuff to talk to each other. Cause right now it's this standalone document and this standalone document.
Yeah.
So.
But the, I, I would like to, personally, that I think that would be a good place to start because that affects so many other ordinances, uh, that we have is
I think you'd be confused on the, that process, like if, like this is referencing the noise ordinance, which I guess you, every business and resident follows the noise ordinance that's already written. So you can't write a specific one for the winery if we're referencing that. So are we gonna tie up all of our work because our other ordinances aren't where we want them to be? I mean, if we're gonna say you're gonna reference the ordinance, knowing that we have to go back and we need to tighten that ordinance up. I guess I don't understand, we just keep coming back to the noise thing. I did do some research on that. I talked to Grand Travers County and like the decimal reading or whatever the measurement. Well, nobody owns a device to measure that. Whitewater doesn't and Grand Travers County does not use one. They, they use the township's ordinance and it's all subjective, you know, when they go to the site to see. That's how they enforce it.
Yeah.
So how can we write an ordinance that says measurable when who's gonna measure it?
That this, uh, traffic, Traverse City has a, an ordinance that has a measurable, uh, level.
Right. But Grand Travers County doesn't. And Grand Travers County sheriff who would respond to the complaint doesn't have that to, that device.
Yeah, might be a good grant, a grant. But, uh, yeah. We, in this noise, uh, noise is one of those, um, issues with, that affects so many of our ordinances. That's why there's, um, setbacks to reduce the noise coming from another property, uh, and things like that. And, uh, it, it, uh, it came to pass, short-term rentals, people always complaining about the noise from the short-term rentals. It, it's something that affects so many ordinances that ours is so kind of vague and, you know, my, my, my my voice doesn't really carry. But I, I have a friend that could be outside talking and you could hear him in here. So it's not, it has to be some sort of measurable.
I'll think, sorry.
I'm just sorry. I'd just like to point out that, you know, we need, we need to work on our ordinances. We need to work on the, the, the noise ordinance. But i- if that, if this references the noise ordinance and we change the noise ordinance, then they have to be with it, right? So what I would like to do here, cause I, I don't want us to keep getting in the weeds here and not moving forward and stuff because things are starting to pile up on us and we want to move things forward. So I'd like to take a look at this, you know, um, done a great job putting this together with all the information we've got from everybody so far. I would like to take a look at this and see, you know, um, at this point, I think there's enough in here that, that at least it should go to our legal. And then they're gonna be able to tell us, you know, if we're going the way in the wrong direction or if we're in the right direction, what's right, what's wrong. But for us to just keep guessing, I think it's mute point at this time. So.
And I only provided my review because Sadie provided me the ordinance and I wanted to just kind of spend a couple of days looking at it and that's what I did. And if anybody wants
And I tried to make, I made some good edits, I feel like, off of what you gave us. I tried to hit every point. I think the only thing I didn't really touch on was the traffic, but I feel like that's really, dependent on where it's at and the, the special use permit, that's where that's gonna come in. And then as far as the agricultural preservation, I mean, we talked about that in the very beginning of the intent of the whole winery is to preserve that. So.
And I also want the PC to be aware that the process of getting a winery is not easy.
Yeah.
It is a very long and drawn out process. I've helped two wineries start, one of which I had to reach out to one of my lobbyist friends in Lansing and have her grease some wheels. So that way the, the license could get pushed through because it was getting hung up on just a minute detail that didn't need to be done. So they get, we, somebody could try to start a winery here and it just may never happen.
So I'd like to ask the commission here then, do you see enough in here? I mean, we, we beat this up quite a bit. We've done a lot of good edits and I hope you had a chance to read all of this. But from what Josh has given us and some of the other information we've had, just done some great edits in here. And I think it looks good. Not perfect, but we're not gonna know what's good or what's not good until the attorney takes a look at it. What's up? Yes. Ninety-five. Right? Page ninety-five.
So let me ask, did all of Josh's comments get into the draft that is in the packet?
The letter, I think the letter was in, was the letter in the packet. Yeah. It's in the packet.
So Josh's comments are So Josh's comments are in the current draft of the winery ordinance?
The, his letters in.
He's, he's asking incorporated Josh's.
Yes, so.
Not the entire letter, but his suggestions.
His suggestions on, so the edits that were made, I can tell you real quick. Under A permitted uses, A retail sales of merchandise and food services is allowed, we cleared that up. There's an edit in that sentence. You guys following me? And then also on promo, on. Did you guys print like AAAA under permitted uses or did it say A, B, C, D, E?
This is A, B, C, D.
Okay, mine, for somebody who found it, so Y, C, D, so E, under E. We cleared up, um, the whole thing of promotional activities and winery sponsored events, so tried to define those more and separate them. Versus an event versus a promotional activity, because it was kind of gray. We talked about that at the last meeting too, like, what's the difference? So did do some editing there on what, which is what and, or which is which, so. Promotional activities is clearly defined now, I feel like, and so is events under C and D. Or actually, that's supposed to be A, B, C, D, E, F, G, G and H, you see those? Okay, so those are. I feel like more clear and separated, separated where they weren't before, and that's where we have to, things were getting a little bit tricky. I also. Addressed the acreage thing at the very end, thirteen point one seven. Under minimum requirements, we had said. Fifty planted acres, that whole paragraph got pretty much rewrote. On what we minimally required and mostly that was legally because of legal reasons that he had stated. And I had talked, I have talked to some other people in the wine industry and they said, no, that you can't, they can't regulate that, so you need to take that right out.
Yeah, uh, which page are you on in the packet? I'm, I'm still looking at ninety-six.
Ninety-seven would be, uh.
Seven, okay.
Or thirteen, seventeen?
How did we, uh, resolve the issue of outdoor events?
Well, that's, we're working on another, um, ordinance for that.
Yeah, but that, that's included in this on promotional activities. Uh, and while outdoor uses such as music, dining, wine tastings, tents, umbrellas and other similar outdoor activities are allowed. Uh, and, and for me, that's great if there's a noise. Uh, restriction, uh, that's where O M P got, um, involved with the, the amplified music. Wasn't allowed and, uh, the, the judge struck that down. I personally want to wait for the appeal to come through, because I'm just, um, risk adverse. Um, but just looking at this on the hours of event operations confined from ten to eleven. At ten AM to eleven PM is really late for me. If, because this, this is going to be in, uh. Basically an ag or housing area and, um, eleven o'clock's pretty late for, um.
But we can still discuss, you know, the, the, the hours and things like that. I'm looking for here is something basic that we can send to the attorney and say, this is our, our intent, this is our idea.
So I, yeah, I, I agree with that, I guess, um. As long as we can come back to it, I mean, I see things like, we get the twenty acres, twenty acres may be broken up into separate parcels. Does that mean that they're contiguous parcels? Or is it, can they be two acres, then another couple acres somewhere else, you know, it's. It's that kind of detail that matters and.
Yeah, I think how to clear that, yeah, how to word that accurately, because we had talked about that, like, some people don't own, own their farm all in one chunk.
Yeah, and so we just need to be clear in what we're. We're approving here, that's, I don't have a problem, I just want to be specific about it.
No, I, I, I'm not saying that we're, we're, we're saying that this is it. I'm just saying that, like, to move this on to the attorney so that he can tell us if we're going in the right direction or not.
Before we, uh, send.
For one second, it's ten o'clock. I need to make a motion to extend the meeting beyond the three hour mark. Make a motion, is there a second?
A second, Stratton.
All in favor? I'm trying.
I.
Opposed?
Before we, uh, send things on to the attorney. At what point do you want to have a hearing and let the public weigh in and give their thoughts? Because if, if you end up going back to the attorney two or three times, it'd be better if you get the public input and. Make any other tweaks, so if you do the hearing and then make your changes and then you might have something to go to the attorney with. Just the suggestion instead of sending it to the attorney, having a hearing and then having to go back.
My thought on this though is I don't want to go into a hearing without knowing what the attorney said. Because anybody in a hearing can say anything. I thought, oh, that sounds great, but I don't know if.
Prefer to get legal advice from attorneys rather than.
Right, you know, that's just my point with this is I'd like to see, you know, that we're going in the right direction or not. And then, you know, when we, when we feel like we're.
We can ask them for like a cursory review here, where, where are the red flags in this thing that, you know?
Does that make sense, Deb? I understand. Right. I, I like what Randy said, maybe just cursor, just take, can you just look at this and. What are, what are the red flags and, right? Is everybody okay with that? Do we need a voter motion on that? No, okay. Alright, so we will send this on to attorney, we'll figure out how to do that and, uh. We'll hopefully have something back for our next meeting. Okay?
It's better to go to an attorney before you need them.
Yeah, I just like to at least know what we're talking about a little bit before we have a hearing. Alright, so, uh, let's move on to private, the private road ordinance.
So we've been talking about this for several months and.
I, I just wanted to clarify that I did just, um, on the worksheet, I just threw in what, uh, Josh had written down in there. It's not, it's just a start, so, good.
Oh, yes, yeah, I spoke with.
I'm just standing here just in case.
Oh, okay, so, so there have been a long history of private road ordinance issues, I'm not going to go into all that. You all know that, uh, Denise has been working on this and we've been talking for a couple of months about how best to approach this. We did agree that it would be good to get Cody Fraser in here to help us write a private road ordinance. Building on what was done before as well as new material from Josh. We had struggled a little bit with the scope of services so that they can know what they're going to get into and what. So we came up with a agreement for services. It is twenty-five hundred dollars for have, have them look at the prior versions and come up with a very basic private road ordinance. For the most part, there's a lot of engineering that's necessary in that. That we're not the only township in the state of Michigan where the private road ordinance are not having one or the need for one, so. That we don't need to reinvent the wheel, there are smaller townships around Michigan and Jennifer at Gordy Fraser has worked with several of them. She's actually a trustee in Paradise Township and is familiar with theirs. So it's, and most of it's going to require some explanation, she's committing to four meetings with the township. Um, possibly two or three with the planning commission, one with the township board. This is a general ordinance, so we would, um, suggest that this agreement be approved, it's in our budget. I don't know, do you want anything Denise?
A motion?
It works really well when you have a professional like we have Giffords Webster walking us through this issue, pointing out, giving us a draft. Get, get something we can work on, we can, you know, there are professionals that do this for a living, we, we don't need to.
When people do this for their whole career and we're here, you know. Only three hours a meeting. It, it's, uh, it's great to have a professional help and, and not, and I'd like to give credit to people who have been. Working on this for years to, uh, Mike Jacobson and Kim Mangus, so, um.
Look where it's left us here, we were sitting here and we've got private roads being approved here in the county, the township and we're falling behind here. And it's concerning to me that private roads are getting installed and they're not.
Yeah, that's, I think what I want to mention is that's why I kind of interjected myself in this conversation. Just because we do have a couple of private roads that have went in that come wintertime will not be accessible by the fire department, hands down. And I think that that is, um, something that we have to take ownership of. Because if we don't do anything and that house does say burn down, that's, that's on us as a township for not. Putting, like, yes, they built a road, but we should, like, we should make sure that we can get our apparatus down there. That's the only thing I care about at the end of the day is life safety. I want to be able to get an ambulance and a fire truck down there. And I want to make sure that what we do do has that component in there. The rest of it is, I just wrote something that from a life safety standpoint, that my, my draft ordinance legit was, that's all it was. So, um, but we do have, and Deb and I talked when she just left, we talk about that frequently. She'll tell me that a private road goes in, I go drive it and I'm like, I, I can barely get my pickup truck up the, up the hill. Let alone the new subdivision that's going in off of Cook Road. Like, their plan isn't really to have a turnaround for fire trucks, I may have to back completely out of there. So it's just things like that that I want to try to, and I think Gordy Fraser is going to do a great job.
Yep, thank you. So there, was there an, um, a motion?
I was just going to read from, I, I'd like to make a motion for services to be performed by GFA. With the scope of work to include preparation of a draft private road ordinance for the planning commission and the township board to consider. Work to include meetings with stakeholder group to incorporate key elements specific to the township. Meeting attendance, coordination and applicable regulatory agencies and changes as needed. Anyone second it?
I'll second that.
Oh, for a fee of twenty-five hundred, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars, thank you.
I know I've said many times before, one of the things that concerns me is lots getting sold off before the roads can completely build the way it's supposed to be. And the developer leaves, I've experienced that, that's a dangerous situation to be in.
Okay, so this would be a roll call vote?
Yes, alright, um, Milnick?
Yes.
Merchant?
Yes.
Robo?
Yes.
Sultan and yes, DeYoung?
Yes.
Stratton?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to talk about before we move on to Randy on that? Alright, um, in interest of time, um, I have not done anything else with the side venue ordinance. Yet, it's the same as it was, so I'll try to look at that again for next month, see if I can get a little bit more updated on that. Does anybody have any comments about that? Alright. Moving on, okay, the next, uh, meeting will be November first, seven PM, two thousand twenty-five.
It's actually November five, I just noticed that was wrong on the agenda.
Well, it's November five.
Yes. Thank you, Katie.
It is correct, so. Next meeting is November fifth, two thousand twenty-five at seven PM. Moving on to public comment. Anybody that'd like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mike Jacobson, Skimog Point Road. I want to be real clear. The private road ordinance, uh, not being adopted had nothing to do with the, with what the planning commission did. The planning commission worked their tail off, the board would not approve anything we put forward. And the board would not give us any reason why they didn't, so we didn't know what they wanted changed. We worked our tail off on that.
Yes.
It kind of got me a little irritated and I've kind of missed something I wanted to say here, but. Uh, this, this, uh, I don't understand what just happened tonight in the meeting with the computer screen. And everybody using their phones, I'm kind of confused and I'm, uh, maybe I, maybe I, I'm not a computer guy, so I just don't understand. But. Uh, what it looked to me like was happening, anybody who had an expensive phone could put that app on their phone and ask questions. Not just the board or the, the planning commission. Well, I don't have an expensive phone, I couldn't be part of that conversation. Uh, if you don't have, if this room was full and you didn't have a good seat, you couldn't see the questions on the screen.
Just to be clear, that wasn't for the attendees, that was just for the board members.
We're putting questions on that screen.
We understand that, they've been, they've been told and are aware of it, so.
Okay, so that, that's my confusion, I'm just like, what is going on?
No, we understand that, I was confused about that at first too.
There was something else I wanted to say, but, um. It's lost to me now, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Kim Angus, fifty-one oh one Brown Bear.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, I wanted to congratulate you because I think you, um, covered a lot of territory tonight. Um, but I also wanted to give you a word of caution. There's only so much you can get done. And I understand the temptation, I've been where you're at, to try to, um. Check off the boxes to get through the agenda, to make progress on every front. But in my experience, that I've been dealing with this township and working on ordinances. Sometimes when you try to get too much done at once, you don't make as much progress as you do if you slow down. And what I'm seeing is the planning commission tackling too many fronts. Tackling too many ordinances, and I know you've, that was a concern of yours, Randy, with the outreach subcommittee taking on multiple things. And that's why they're only doing one, but we have multiple ordinances we're juggling here with the consultants, with the planners. With the ones we're working on in-house, the ones that are being researched. I see the planning commission getting spread really thin and maybe not taking as much time to thoroughly discuss. As you move through the ordinances, so I'd like to encourage you, even if it slows progress, even if you're not knocking things off the list. Take as much time as it takes to get things right, to do the research, to go back and find out. I, I constantly hear questions, well, I don't know how it got like that. There are also those of us here who know those answers. Um, and we're happy to share how that weird ordinance got like that. Why there are words missing, why there are chunks that just don't make sense. Reach out, there are multiple of us that would be more than happy to help, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Alright, moving on.
I do have a, I mean, I just. I don't know if you're ready for your comments.
Yes.
But, you know, when it comes to a zoning ordinance, it shouldn't require going back to see people who were involved with it, the ordinance should speak for itself. I mean, the language in the ordinance is what should guide this planning commission and the planning commission two years from now, five years from now. You know, we have to get the language right and I'm glad that we have good, good consultants helping us craft these and they're, they're flagging things that. Stand out and, and we'll, we'll fix it and it shouldn't be, you know, in somebody's head from a few years ago. It should be black and white in the ordinance, that's the goal, you know, um, so I want to try to make that clear that we're. It's, it's not person dependent, it, it, it's laws and, and language in, in the ordinance that's as clear and transparent as possible. I also want to make a point about, um, the site plan review, uh, issue. Our, our ordinance specifically describes what's supposed to be in a site plan submittal. submittal. I mean, we should have a checklist
Right.
that says there's twenty nine, twenty six things that are supposed to be in there. You hand that to the engineer. The engineer produces plans with those things, you know, either on the plan or not applicable. It, it's not helpful to the planning commission to have a site plan that isn't complete. And, and, you know, we, and I know we're working with new processes, the chief, Gordy Fraser, Deb, what she's doing, but we've got to get that so that it's, it's works. I know that's a lofty goal, because I mean, I think we're a small township with the midstaff and everything, trying to cover a lot of bases, but that's the goal, is to get a site plan in front of you that's complete and, and actionable. And it's hard for applicants, it's hard for residents, it's hard for planning commission members to deal with it when it's not. So.
Right. I, I agree with that. I think that it's better for us to, of course, make our life easier, but we should be thinking about the next planning commission, the next members that come in and you know, that they're not dealing with stuff that we didn't deal with. And I know I make things a little busy. I, I'm pushing to get, you know, multiple things done. I'm not the type that'll sit here and try to do one thing at a time. If that's the kind of person you want up here, that's not me. So I will push this as hard as we can to get as much done as we can.
Yeah, I appreciate what Kim said about the, the fact that there, it looks like we're tackling a lot of things, but a lot of these things, you've got to put multiple balls in the air to get, get progress on it. You know, we can make quick progress on some things, some things are going to slow down, some things we're going to find new things out on. So it's really kind of a you know, two steps forward sometimes, and with this project, three steps with this one, maybe no steps with this one. You know, because there's questions out there, but, you know, attacking things at multiple levels makes a lot of sense and I know it can work in planning commissions, because I've seen it.
Work on one thing and then stop and, okay, we're done for the day, you know. And, and we're trying, I, I think all of us feel a lot of pressure to get a lot of these ordinances reviewed and.
Oh, I keep, I'm sorry, I keep doing that. Would that feel a lot of pressure to move all of the agenda forward and get things done and all of the consultants, you know, these bundles are quite large and a lot to do and it can be overwhelming. Having a consultant guide us through it is a tremendous help. And Sadie's doing one by herself and basically, and we haven't been helping her at all, but you know, we're, we're moving forward at least a little bit. And the other people, I think Deb's gone, but Deb's done.
No, she's still there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I don't, I was, I okay. She's, the, the zoning administrator is doing a great job. And if there was a checklist that's the, for the site plan review or whatever we're reviewing, and they have everything checked off, like the landscape buffers and all that, before it came to us, we wouldn't you know, we could just move forward through the packet and just look at everything and make a decision, but when there's not everything in it and you notice it and then, you know, the the applicant feels like we're just stalling or, you know, making things difficult for them, but it's just the, the process.
Well, we also should rely on Gordy Fraser to help with that part of it too, to make sure as our plan review stuff, that should be more than just the stormwater. It should be you know, checking through this, we have all the requirements in place, and if it's not, then it, it can't go forward. I'm sorry, it just, it doesn't help the applicant or us or the public if there's missing pieces.
Yeah, it makes me very uncomfortable to approve a plan that's not complete. You know, and having, having to add a bunch of conditions to the motion and that.
I've been in the position of getting plans and the applicant says, I want to get this through this month and I'm almost done, I'll have you this, I have, it doesn't come, come in and then you already put it on the agenda and you're stuck. You know, I mean, that happens. It's just the practical, the daily life, you know, but it's, it's hard to be the tough guy.
I like the idea too, they talked about, you know, the checklist items, doesn't even, as long as it goes to administering, the zoning administrator and it, and it checks that box, that the plan is there and it meets the ordinance shouldn't be reviewing that part of it.
Shouldn't take much time for the planning commission to look at it.
Yeah.
Page one twenty three and one forty seven in your packets. On two separate pages in there.
Well, I believe, we understand that, but I don't think it had enough in it.
It wasn't the detail that's required.
The detail wasn't in there. Yeah. Yep. I think that's our point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's in there. It's in, it's in there.
Yeah, some of it is.
Yeah.
Alright.
I do think the, the separate meetings for the, for the work with Giffords. I don't know why I can't remember the. And Gordy Fraser. But anyways, are super important because that really makes the meeting long.
Right.
Yeah, and we need to be able to focus on, on the, I mean, what they're doing is important and our response to it is important, so.
I would like to suggest this, I'm glad you just brought that up. You know, I didn't understand that they were going to ask questions like that that were already in this packet, so what I'd like us to do is when we get that, answer those questions. And shoot them off to them. Give them, give them the questions before the meeting, so when we get here, we're not going through all that, that we don't need to go to, that we can already answer. That a thought?
I read that thing up. Got it on the computer.
Yeah.
Then I, I did look today a little bit on my paper copy, because I was busy with so, yeah, okay.
I mean, does that sound okay? Or, you know, worst case, bring it here and at least have the questions answered.
They could do the mentee thing, you know, beforehand as well, because the, the way they asked the questions in the presentation, it was actually much simplified versus the questions in the packet. So I, I think, I think if they want to do the mentee thing, that's totally fine, but just send it out to us beforehand. Like they did the survey.
And I was confused because it, you know, were they looking for our comments or were they looking for the public's comments? I mean, they were getting both.
They were getting both.
Whatever that was, I don't think that worked right. I did shoot them off an email. I, I don't think that, that will work next time.
I think it's, it's nice to be able to get the feedback like that from that. I mean, but I guess it's not, I mean, I don't have a problem with other people adding to it, but I don't think.
Well, it can skew the, the results though.
Yeah.
So you know, it's not, I mean, somebody can go out there and.
There could have been twenty people here.
Exactly.
Upside.
Yeah.
Which is okay. I don't, I mean, I'm not criticizing that.
Anyway, so.
Seal.
So. You want them to send the questions?
They will send the questions. The questions are in the packet. I just didn't realize there were questions that we had to answer.
Oh, okay.
Right. They're rhetorical.
So do you want us to answer them?
Yes.
Before.
Before we come.
It's pretty dense material from, I mean, if you don't have any background in it to
Right.
think about, that's.
I mean, just answer it the best you can, you know, with the, they're, they're going to give you all the information with it. So you just read the question and then you look at what they're talking about, and if you, you know, just get a, a little bit of an answer so that we're not
Talking about.
The problem is, is we're trying, we're taking too much time just thinking about it. And that's what's taking all this time, so.
The other thing about the separate meeting is I think it's important that Deb's there.
Yes.
So we need to make sure it works with her schedule, because I felt like a few of the questions she could answer, you know,
Yeah.
better than I could.
Well, I think.
I don't get asked. I don't, my, my opinions don't get incorporated and I don't get asked. So I stay out of it until you ask me.
We ask you a lot.
Yeah.
If you want me, you have to request. Ask me if you want to participate. You have to let me know.
Okay, just, is there anything else before we move on? Trying to get everybody out of here. Right, so just to continue education, did everybody see that short term rental thing that set up? I'm going to actually go to it tomorrow night. I think.
I'm signed up, like, do we get reimbursed for that?
Yes.
Okay, so there.
I'll give you a form right after the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think when we go to it, to it, gives us a link to something else everybody else could look at, something, so.
I'm hoping.
Yeah. Well, anyways. Adjournment. I make a motion that we adjourn?
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Carrie.